Imagine what's just a.
There are five.
Some adjustment.
The screen, who's on the screen?
I should have to adjust it because I think we should know.
Yeah, because when we do like over at Central Iowa, all of the people that are zoomed in, they're in a little block and even if they're like on the phone, it'll show a black block with the phone number.
And it like when I'm on with.
And then that helps you to actually keep track of who's here or isn't.
We've had thirty six people on the phone, we know who they are, and then we can actually see the chats when they're.
Does or does she knows who calls in to get the numbers? So she might even, does Michelle write that down?
She does, she knows.
Who's who's on?
I would.
Yeah, yeah.
Two. Annex building, we were going to be on the.
But I mean, you know, on YouTube.
Oh, no, no.
You've been through it already, right? Building where public health is right now.
That's called the annex. Yeah, it says right on there. Look up.
Please, no.
Kyle, be nice to the new guy.
It's all right. Took me all afternoon to figure out.
Don't feel like.
You have, that looks like a.
I got no thoughts today.
It's good for us.
Yeah. You guys are gonna be so pleasantly pleased with how quiet I am going to be today.
We're recording, you know?
No, no.
All right.
No doubt.
Sorry, I'm in your space. You're here?
Yeah.
You think I do?
Yeah.
Well, we shouldn't have. I got lots of breath in this. Stress balls.
Michelle, I have something. Michelle, I have a screen. Didn't take anything in this morning, I gotta get away with it.
Our budget work.
Is that kind of early for any?
No.
Oh.
Time is. Close enough. In this order.
I quickly would like to certify the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, team. Everybody had a chance to review the agenda. Are there any conflicts of interest? Hearing none, Madam Monitor, if you would read the minutes of last week, please.
March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rosberg, Chairman presiding, members present, or Schultz, Dozart, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for Public Health Department and approved claims for all other department. Departments. The board approved the clerk of court fees for February twenty twenty-three. Board approved the change of status for Patricia Blount, full-time scale house operator, solid waste agency. Discussion was made by the board about the future of the county farm. No action was taken at this time. Board canvassed the votes cast in the Dennison Community School District Special Election held on March seventh, twenty twenty-three. The board also canvassed the votes cast in the IKM Manning School Special Election held March seventh, twenty twenty-three. Copies of the canvas and abstracts are available in the auditor's office. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned ten fifty-one AM agendas for the next meeting are posted and available in the courthouse on Friday four thirty PM preceding the next meeting. I know, I wish it was like that.
Do we have any additional corrections to the minutes from last week? Hearing none? Wonder.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's uh move on with our supervisors' reports. Kyle, you want to start this week?
Oh, hi.
Changing it up on us here.
Wasn't quite ready.
No, I was, I was, I was ready, but I uh highlighted last week the Yes Center meeting in Cherokee on Friday. Financials are still kind of lagging behind. There's a few reasons why that's happening, and I think ours was one of them that we were greater than ninety days behind on some of them, but yeah, I've had some questions and some invoices that they need to clear up, so that's why ours is behind. And some of it is because a kid in Pocahontas might be from Plymouth County, but he gets arrested in Pocahontas. They gotta track down who's actually paying and who the kid belongs to, but that's a lot of it. Some of that stuff, but uh they had judges came up, there was seven, eight judges invited to come tour the facilities, four showed up.
How many showed up?
Four.
Fifty percent? That's not a bad day for judges, right?
No, uh, I thought that went very well. But the thing that they were talking to the judges about, and and I agree with it, that the criminal versus the mentally health, mentally challenged or whatever, being put in the same facilities. And uh they spoke of a twelve-year-old that was there for mental reasons, being incarcerated in the same facility and intermixing with the seventeen-year-olds from Des Moines that are there for murder one. And so Cheryl was really trying to figure out, to come up with a plan to, we need to keep them separate. Don't give these kids that are in here for mental reasons, any ideas on how they can move to the next step, you know?
I know.
They don't need that kind of networking.
They don't need that kind of networking. So I think the judges, she'd just got this in an email form. This Tan Tanager is a, is kind of what they're working on to where they can separate them. And the Yes Center does have the capabilities to do it, but they need the state approval. There's fifteen more beds on the other side of the hall, but here again, the whole state thing as well, the state allocations for beds are kind of messed up.
Yeah, I think.
I wish they'd deal with them kind of things instead of worrying about our budgets.
There's three problems with that. Twelve-year-old with a seventeen-year-old.
Yep.
A mentally challenged with people that have just broken the law.
Yeah.
And the fact that we're spending so much money on mental health, and yet they're in with.
They're getting treated for detention and not getting treated for mental health.
Right, they're they're in there, not getting help.
So they are working with, isn't it, is it the judge's discretion though as to which facility they go to? I think the judge, only judge send them there?
They still only have so many beds and are only allowed to use so much.
I think the judge can't send them someplace where the state hasn't authorized they be, you know? And if the beds aren't there, if the allotment of beds aren't for that, I think they have to kind of see where there's room.
The state's been very good at facilities where these people should be going.
Yeah, exactly.
The mental health hospitals or treatment centers that ward for that, I think the state's got them pretty much all closed. So now they just get shoved into detention. There's no other place for them to go.
Hospital or jail?
Did Cheryl say how long it would take for the state to reply back on whether they would allow them to use those other sixteen beds? Well.
Hopeful that there'd be some movement, being as the judge has seen it.
Yeah, that's probably a plus.
Notes here, I think I might have it wrong, but there's a mental health therapist in Emmett County that she's talked to, our mental health region, the Sioux Rivers. It's seventy-eight thousand dollars a year, but I think if we can get the mental health regions to pay that, that would help put another piece of the puzzle to get these kids. And I think we could actually separate them anyway. Might require more staffing, a little bit more staffing, just put the mental health cases on one wing and attention, but get some actual help for them instead of just locking them up, you know?
So do you have counselors up there already?
I think to not the extent maybe that.
That they need.
They need, but.
So Kyle, did that child actually have a diagnosis in one of the three areas of schizophrenia? Or there's three different categories?
I'm gonna make an assumption, but I mean, they're pretty tight on.
Yeah, yeah.
Patients, hipper stuff, so.
That requires medication and, you know, somebody to talk to.
Lots of other things, give a valuation on some of that, you know, medications, like seeing my own daughter is like, they counteract each other, you know?
Yeah, and without the proper diagnosis, these kids are being in the cracks somewhere, just like we talked about a year and a half ago, that that's what's gonna start happening. And you see it happening today.
So I just, and I think the majority of us up there just agreed that this is a continuation of the state reeling in their responsibilities and shoving it onto the local people and trying to say, hey, you figured it out.
With limited funds.
With less funds.
With less funds. And less options that were to send them.
Right. So I think, I don't, hopefully optimistic that something will change there.
Excellent. You know, I get CD, I get Central Iowa this week. I'll see if there's something he can do to help push the same thing.
And if we would receive any bills from Woodbury County Detention Center, I don't think we ever have any kids up there, but just in case we do, don't pay it, because they're holding the Yes Center hostage and being working store for them. We'll just subtract it off.
Those all go to Nate's office. I don't authorize payment of any of that stuff.
I'll have to talk to him about it, yeah, who's made.
Easy. Our probation officer.
Doing our probation.
You know, and he actually does try to sort them kids out. I wonder how many of them are actually doing that? You know, Nate tries to.
My guess is hands are getting tied too. I mean, if there is a mental health treatment facility around, I'm sure it's full, so.
Yeah, he's flat out said when they've had cases where if you get the right diagnosis and the right medication, that they turns a kid around like that and how they can succeed in school and college and go on with their life.
That's important, I think.
Yeah.
And to me, that's the better way to take one criminal off the street, actually find a way to help them, just didn't put them in a cell.
Well, yeah, you know.
On to the ripoff effect of what they add to the community once they, you know, do get a job, a home, a family.
Positive.
But after the meeting, there was a group of us talking how they are handling their budget, and a lot of them are, you know, go above the three fifty on general basic and using the state's actions as the reasoning why they are.
Jason from Oceola told me they flat out are doing, when they took away the backfill.
Yeah.
But that's only gonna last this year if the.
Well, it's, it's, it was more of a.
Swipe back.
Yeah, swipe back, say, hey, that's what we're doing.
Excellent point.
Just because you guys are not holding up to what you guys said you would do, so we gotta do this.
How do you think they'll really get the message, though?
I don't even think they'll.
Well, with their idea.
I doubt it.
We were told in I-sec, there were thirty counties over three fifty, and you started in those counties, the state wants to reduce them below three fifty. Now all of a sudden, if you have another ten or twenty counties go over that this year.
So you have forty.
I don't, I don't know, no major difference, because after our school board meeting last night, I know the superintendent had went down Capitol Day at the Hill, and they were in a meeting with the head of the education. And the, the only answer they got was said, well, we'll have to run this past the uh party chair, because if we don't want anything to do with it, we can't do anything with it, otherwise we won't be reelected. So that just tells me that, you know, if it's not what the party in charge wants, it's not gonna, nothing's gonna change anyway. And and Jean Miners, he said, it don't matter. And he said, I'm a Democrat, he says, he says, same stuff happens when they're in charge. And he said, well, it's not, it's just, it's unfortunate that the pendulum swings both ways so much. So will any of this change? I guess we'll wait and see. But I think it's Lisa, hey, you know, we see what you're doing, we don't like it.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna go. Who can tell the counties that they can't go over three fifty?
The state.
The state.
So is the state, would be the state auditor, or would it?
I mean, you certify your budget, I suppose, I don't know.
Department of Management is the department that you certify your budgets through.
So they would come back and say, you didn't do this right.
And those limits are statutory, they're, they're by, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
She wants to show reason, give you some specific reasons as to when or why you can.
Right, and those reasons are about to change.
Exactly.
And the reason we can go over three fifty if they change, because it's disasters.
Yeah, disaster will be the only reason you can go over three fifty.
Well, it sounds like it's got, you know, no headline.
It's close to a disaster.
My whole thing, Craig, is what I don't understand, okay, why you undo the property tax changes at state level? Where is your formula? Where, run the numbers before you project this. Wow. I know how it's gonna affect the counties before you change this, and then we come up screaming and kicking that, hey, we're short all this funds to run our, you know, locally, but nobody has confirmed to me that they've actually done that. And I mean, I know we asked.
Rarely happens, I imagine, rarely.
Where, where is the formula? Where's the, the studies? Where's the research that shows? Nobody can answer it.
The formula's in the bud, buzzer, Billy. What do they mean?
If you need a CDO.
That's kind of like, I mean, we, Jean and I, last week after the meeting, we went and talked to Dwayne about the summit. And.
Yes.
The form that they put out of how much tax dollars it was gonna go to each county. And so sent an email out, and the response we got back was they eat, that they either did it statewide, that based on what they estimate statewide. So they did specifically go county to county to show exactly how much every county is going to um read based on that county's tax levy. They just kind of did general statewide, and you're like, that's not really how you should be doing it. You should be specifically doing it per county, so every county knows exactly, because the number.
But that's how growth is, that's how growth is determined. It's a statewide average.
Yeah.
So some counties are greater than, is it three percent? I don't even remember. I, I feel like it's three percent currently. Some are above three percent, some are below three percent.
Counties are probably.
It's an average. Growth, valuation growth, assess valuation growth.
They do it statewide. With Dallas counties, they, they can't tax fast enough for their growth. They can't provide the infrastructure for the growth happen, and we can't, we can't maintain our infrastructure because of the growth we don't have.
Yeah.
And I suppose the flip side of that coin, Kyle, is, you know, Dallas counties probably gotta be in a tight spot saying, hey, you cap our growth here with somebody who, let's say, you cap us at that two point five percent.
But they're probably one of those over the three point five.
But I mean, how do you manage that new growth with this property tax shift?
You know, they got the biggest, some of the biggest potential for there, but they gotta build new schools and everything, got the highest tax rate.
I think it's probably those type of, those type of services that are really hitting them in the back. I mean, you gotta, you gotta figure that the county's budget, you know, and the city budgets are giving abatements and stuff to try to get industry and housing built, and so that tax revenue is running behind on what you need for the infrastructure to support what you're doing. And in the meantime, because the people are moving in, your schools have got to expand, so that expenses are basically a mandate.
One more question. What is the punishment for going above the table?
I would imagine the Department of Management would say you can't do that. I don't think any of us go to jail, but we might have to come back and.
So I highly recommend we just stay where we're at and not try to.
You have to get it approved first, that.
Yeah.
Right. Want, then.
We don't have much time to do all that, so we should try to stay.
I was just saying what them guys are doing. I'm not saying we need to maybe follow that lead, but uh, no, I like, we're pretty good at being smart and wise around here to, you know, necessarily follow the lead, they.
Highly recommend we.
Well, and I think a lot too, like Jason at Oceola, they weren't raising taxes, they were raising their three fifty mark, but then taking, lowering their supplemental, so they were saying the same, but it was more of a, we're gonna go over the three fifty to tell you state that we're funding your unfunded mandates, and we're gonna document this in our certification.
Levying out of the general fund gives you more flexibility in being able to spend it where supplemental, you know?
So they weren't increasing their levies, per se, over the total, it was just, we're gonna increase this.
That seems like a bucket of worms, though.
What are you hearing on the EMS thing? Sorry.
EMA?
The EMA, that's what I meant, the EMA being a self-taxing entity.
Still moving forward.
That's what I'm hearing.
Moving slow.
Okay.
Other than that, I think there's just a few, worked a few details out on the way I'm managing my agreement, but uh.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, no, last week, I think, that's all I had.
Mr. Dozart, do you have any?
Uh, I didn't have anything last week. Tonight, Western Iowa Community Action Meeting, six o'clock. On a personal note, our, last of our four kids is getting married on Saturday in Fargo, and so I'm leaving tomorrow morning.
Fargo, vacation capital of the world.
Pack your boots.
I'm even putting my snow blower in the back. I mean, I twenty-nine was just closed over the weekend. My son, who lives in Fargo, said that his, he can't even, his snow blower can't even shoot the snow over the side of his driveway anymore. They got so much snow.
Well, that'll be interesting to see.
So, yeah.
Take pictures.
So we're looking forward to getting our family all together. We don't get together all together that much anymore, so looking forward to that.
It's a lot to handle.
Exactly, exactly.
That'll be fun.
Yeah, we'll have fun.
What, what's projected town?
Thirty-one.
Oh, hell.
He probably gets. For them, though, I'll be running around in t-shirts.
Right.
Red River probably come out with things, and you all get a one go like June, right?
Take a canoe.
I mean, I'm, I'm actually, me and my sisters were, we were all, my mother was from Minot, North Dakota, so we were all born in North Dakota.
Oh.
And I went up there for a family wedding in March many years ago and stayed three extra days. Just so we could try to get home.
You get so much as staying three.
He's bored, he won't be here Tuesday.
We grew up about thirty-five miles from the Canadian border, so that's.
Oh, wow. I like your story about taking snowmobiles to school.
Right. Saw it snow every month except July.
Well, it explains a lot about you.
Gardens don't happen there, then, huh?
What's that?
Gardens don't really happen there. Let's have a greenhouse.
We try, you try, we try. But so, that's what I got going on.
Congratulations, that'll be nice.
Exciting.
Okay, Mr. Mulbauer?
Sure, um, we did not have our legislative update on Friday that we usually have, our weekly one end up getting canceled. Probably because they're tired of beating their head against wall, needed a break, I don't know, it's speculating. But um, we did have Region Twelve meeting for our revolving loan funds. The group got together and we approved the new business, that we're gonna fund. Um, it's a traveling snow cone business, out of Ottabin. Um, some of the discussion was being that it was Ottabin, but yet could potentially or most likely serve outside of our region if that was okay, and everybody agreed, yes, it's still business within, you know, originating from one of our counties. Most likely, though, this throughout the summer, they'll serve county fairs, rig brides, you know, the seasonal events, the T-bone days, river ruckus, things like that, and then also be open every night of the week for snow cone business and be able to move around. I have the packet for that. Everybody was decided unanimously to pass it. Um, the funds were looking pretty good for, you know, to do it, and thought that they had all the ducks in the row for this business to take off and to be supported through the Region Twelve revolving loan.
How much do they need to give them?
Forty grand. Seven and a half percent interest, seven-year note.
What interest?
Seven, seven point seven five.
Who, who?
Had the whole packet of the information and the, what it all entails and what they're buying, and that was extended my week.
Thank you. And Hayden?
Oh, boy, it was a low-beating week, but lots of, you know, talk. So what I, I went and talked to Colin this morning, and I, I want to put it on the agenda to bring up, you know, the intervention again, just to, I'm gonna have him kind of get the information on that, and kind of where we're at with our ordinance, maybe an update next week, is out there with everybody. Just put it on the agenda. Um, then we're gonna have our child abuse prevention proclamation on the twenty-eighth. The fifth graders will be coming.
Is that Jody coming up?
Jody, Jody will be coming up, yep.
Who's bringing candy?
Who's bringing candy?
Always hand out little, little.
I guess it'll be me. I don't have anything left from the parade, so uh, even though the crowd was small, my grandsons thought it was necessary to throw candy at nothing or no one.
Had to celebrate your celebrity.
They cracked me up. Um, otherwise, that's pretty much all. I've got our mental health meeting in Holstein this Wednesday, and so that should be a good conversation about some things that are going on. What we really wanna focus on is the number of people that we're seeing, you know, for the amount of money that we put towards this, how many people are you actually seeing? I, I just, not percentages. We need to know with all of our providers, how many people are in and out of that door, how many people are you actually helping? And so.
Are they gonna break it down even accounting?
We're hoping, we're hoping.
Are we sending three people to Sioux City for a government in my own?
That's right. So hopefully that report is ready. Uh, the other things that are on my agenda are on the agenda. So, you know, as far as the city center and things like that, um, kind of, yeah, so, yeah.
Does that cover you? I ain't going without. I'm pretty sure I can't eat up twenty minutes, even with my long-windedness, but I'll, I'll work on it.
Achieving something I never was able to when I was chair.
Yeah, so we get to talk?
You didn't have, you, you didn't have, you had me and Jean to take care of your time.
Sorry.
Good point.
I have, I actually got a couple things.
It wasn't brought up.
Um, CDC, I had the CDC last week, and uh this Friday will be Evan's last official day, and they're having a, everybody feel good today? This thing is overheating the hell out of me.
I feel like a hundred bucks, take it off.
I'm kidding, good. I mean, you, you had a scratchy throw last week, I didn't want that.
Sound bad, but I feel good. How about that?
You sound great. You don't sound like you did last week. Anyway, uh, uh, they're having an open house for the Ignite. I don't know how much of that's done down there. They still got some stuff to buy, but they've got, been working on getting that ready for the incubator space, but they actually have the upstairs pretty much all done. It looks really nice. And then it's got going away, send off for Evan, so if anybody wants to be there. I have to look, I was trying to dig through my emails to find the time here. I must have moved it over here, but in any event, uh, that uh, if you want to go to that, that's when that is, is Friday.
Friday, there's also, I think, what, Wesco is sponsoring the band up now, Friday night?
Oh, okay.
On the twenty-fifth.
Is that Friday night or is that Saturday?
I don't remember either.
I'm gonna have to look through my.
I think, well, it must be the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth is Friday, right?
It's Friday.
What time is it this Friday?
I was just, I was, actually, I was trying to find the time. Who's birthday?
Mine.
Is it? Happy birthday.
Today?
No, it's not till Monday, but we're having my party on Friday. You wanna come?
What time?
Will there be, will there be lots of goodies?
I don't know, probably.
Anyway, the uh, the other stuff, they typically, they didn't have any new information that's curable. At least I want to risk sharing.
You don't want to let the cat out of the bag.
Well, there's not, not a lot of development. We did, Evan did update him on, when him and I were talking to, I can't remember the young man's name off the top of my head. I don't have my scribbled notes. I left them up in the pickup. I don't have my scribbled notes, I left them up in the pickup. From Summit, that has their business development fellow, I'd already updated you guys about it, but they updated the board on that, so. That was one of the uh, bits of information, um, we're still in search of a director, obviously. And they don't know what they can do for spending, but so we're in the meantime, the plans are going forward to uh. For Mariah and Shani to do a few more duties, and they're gonna use what would have been some of Evan's salary to. Give them an interim stipend, I'd be, I guess, the best word to use for it, for the extra stuff, you know, we don't want the. The uh, Tri-City to fall behind on all their planning, they're, they're kinda right on schedule with that right now, so. They wanna keep up with that.
Well, just a stipend, it won't be.
Just until a new director comes on board. Um, we discussed whether or not one of them still had that potential yet, you know, and it's just their lack of experience in that department that's the. The scary thing, you know, I mean, both of them are pretty intelligent young women, and uh. I think it's just the lack of experience there that scares us from, you know. Throwing it at them and, and basically making it so damn difficult, they may end up resigning due to it.
Uh, if they happen to be successful in the local things that we need them to do, but the only thing that they lack is economic development. Would be be further ahead to just hire a firm, to go out after the economic development instead of having that be the eight.
You mean a headhunter?
Just somebody that actually, a, a organization that.
Like contract with.
Yeah, kind of contract to just keep an eye out for things rather than somebody that's on the payroll, you know, uh. You know, we could have a couple of gals take care of these local things that we need done, and the only thing. Aspect of their uh, resume that's a little bit short is economic development and going out. I almost feel like it'd be better if we just keyed in on somebody that does that. And doesn't necessarily need to be a full-time job, or we just have somebody. Maybe on retainer that keeps an eye out for businesses looking to relocate and uh, have Denison's name stay at the top of this. Organization, uh, and let the girls and maybe hire, you know, one more person, I hate to refer them as girls, ladies.
Ladies, yeah.
So just a thought, you know, it just seems like to try to find that perfect mix that'll move to Denison and. Uh, be able to make that happen when they don't even really know the inner workings of how Crawford County works. Um, I don't know, it's just a thought that I.
Yeah, that's worth, that's worth bringing up to them, it isn't really something we've discussed. I, I, I do remember bringing up something similar to it at one point, and we were worried about whether or not Crawford County would be high on their priority list if they had other counties and.
Well, you know, you get paid by uh, performance, you know, uh.
Do you know of any other counties using them?
I don't, yeah, it's really great to bring forward ideas and not have the whole plan, but uh, I guess it's.
But we're, you know, right now, while you don't have anything, it might be.
Just maybe. Yeah, kinda like, um, yeah, I think maybe it's worth thinking out of the box a little bit, you know, because I, I, my biggest fear. You know, as we hire somebody, you know, for six figures to come here and think they've got all the answers on how to, and we, that's not a proven path either, they may have a great resume. On what they did in New York City, but are they really designed to, to get the, the thump of what goes on here in Crawford County, what we need them to do? You know, if you're going to, you know, like Evan used to go to the uh, national meat producers thing in Las Vegas, hoping that he'd find somebody that's. You know, gonna, you know, wanna move here, it really worked out, but if we just have somebody that's going anyway. And uh, talking to people and rubbing shoulders, bring back, uh, a report, I don't know, we could.
Wasn't it crickets at one time we went out to, they're making protein bars out of cricket farms? Grind them up into protein.
You know, that was like a little.
Craig just showed me here. The Wesco thing is Friday night at seven P M. And Cattlemen are cooking burgers and.
They are not quite brothers.
Oh, that's right.
So they cousins then? They're all with it.
They said that they're up there, Central Iowa's fastest growing. I'm sure they put that out there.
So how many, CDC, I mean, they've been around through. Jesus, at one point, Gene, maybe you remembered it. When that started, when it became the Crawford County Chamber of Development Council. What was the reasoning behind that, I think it was just to get.
I don't know.
I think that's when they brought the other communities all in. Cause Denison used to have their own chamber, and I think most all small towns did.
Randy Conrad from Shelby County was our uh, director at that time, and we never really understood how. Somebody that lives in Shelby had the most interest.
Yeah, I do remember that now.
Yeah, we had Sue Pitts for a while, um. And then eventually they uh, became, and that would have been, uh, the Sioux was still just Denison, I think.
Sometimes to move forward, you gotta kinda understand the history of it too, the history, it's kind of an evolving deal, sense of conception.
If you go back to that, I, I, I would like to know all of the success stories that are here because of the efforts. I, I really don't know the answer to it, but it'd be an interesting one, the hundred percent efforts of why we would have that person. Because right now, you know, what they're saying, we're gonna pay him what, ninety thousand?
Well, actually, the sixty to eighty seemed to be what the headhunter that uh. We were talking to, that sixty to eighty would.
Is that about what Evan made?
Yeah, I think, I think he's in the seventies.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as, and he's as a, you know. An experienced director.
Ten extra.
Ten extra, yeah.
To cover the salary. Put another twenty on top of seventy, that's right. I, I'm not saying it wouldn't be worth it, get the right person.
To get the right person, I mean, and, and I will tell you that the uh, interview process, I mean, we, we went through, we, we did find some. Nice resumes, which, you know, but when they sat down, you know, one of the first things we'd asked was about the Tri-City and none of Metaclopa. So I mean, the first question was easy, it really disqualified quite a few of them because you didn't even do any research on us? I mean, this is what we do here, it's kind of a big deal, you know, most people know about it, but uh. I mean, we did, we still did a really tough interview process, you know, and the questions we asked, you know, and they were kind of alluded, tried to make them uncomfortable. Really, I mean, everybody that was in there tried to make them uncomfortable because, just face it, when you sit down with some of these corporate gurus, you know, whether it's with Tyson people or whoever. You know, they're, they'll make you uncomfortable pretty darn quick, cause they know they're at, they know what they're, they know what they're doing there, you know, so anyway. That's one of the things we've been shopping for, but in, in the interim. We started a different program where we're actually making sure these people are getting to school to train them. Even if they aren't the actual director, I mean, we're still wanting them to get development training, send them to some schools and trying to get that. The current staff, yeah, uh, the two full timers and uh. Helping, and then they, they can actually assist in those things, cause let's face it, it's, you know, if you're, if you're negotiating with a, with a large entity, it's an all hands on deck kinda thing, so. I think that these are some things that we've kinda decided, maybe you need to start earlier, growing your own, to have your next one. Sitting there in the wing, so to speak, you know, I mean, that's how I do it with my truck drivers, I grow my own, you know, and. Get people to do it the way it needs to be done, at least in my opinion, as opposed to. Breaking bad habits or whatever the case may be, so I mean, I think that, you know, been nice if this would have been started sooner, but we are, we are changing the. Our trajectory on doing that that way. And I think that Mariah really shows a lot of leadership, you know, she's, she's, she's kind of an aggressive young lady and. And I think that, I think that potentially she'll be a pretty good director at some point.
She's very eager about rolling her sleeves up and getting work.
Yeah, she's not afraid to get sweaty. No, but I just think that, you know, it's just that lack of experience and, and anybody that's, you know, how a new job can be overwhelming to begin with, and then you got a high pressure position like that. It could be something where you got people, I just can't do this, and throw up their hand and leave, and you know, you've actually had them in a great position there already, you know. You see what I'm getting at?
Some of the people don't know that until they're into that.
Exactly, exactly, and we probably all faced that ourselves, you know, we'll take on this job.
I mean, we, it seemed like, you know, we always focus on a corporate big job, big one. I think we're missing the bucket on somebody's small job, small. Four or five employees, I mean, if you had ten of them, you got fifteen employees on the county.
I, and I think they're actually working on it, I mean, that's part of what the incubators are about, yeah, I, I, I do think that they're actually thinking about that, you know, it's just. And I don't even know that, you know, especially Evan would always talk about, we don't need another major. Personnel employer in, 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 in Denison or Crawford County right now, because we just don't have the workforce to, to support it immediately. So we, you know, we've kinda focused on, and they, when I'd sit down and talk with them, and I say, we. What we were focusing on and talking about was, you know, what, what kinda tech jobs or jobs out there that you have. You know, not a minimal, but a mid-range employee staff, but it, it's a bigger facility or it's something that generates a lot of. Higher paying jobs, you know, I mean, instead of the, the forty, uh, forty-five thousand dollar a year job, it'd be a sixty-five thousand dollar, more, more, not tech. Exclusively, but you know, other things.
Tech, I mean, there're just so many, you know, visit other communities and just the different variety of stuff they have on their main streets or. Like, wow.
Yep, oh, that's, and that, that.
That keeps people around, you know.
I mean, just looking.
We, we, we've seen a lot of growth in Crawford County when you look at Conal Carbonics and Monogram and G C C. I mean, the number of, I mean, Wise Monkey Quilton moving to a bigger facility, but then I still on the backside always hearing like. I'd ask Mulvare, why do we pay dues, what do we gain out of it, how, we, we see somebody once maybe a year to do a. Survey.
That was actually one of the questions that we were presenting to these as we were interviewing, what do you see as a better way to. Bring value to the CDC to their membership that's already established, where that was actually one of our questions, you know, and uh. And a couple of them had okay answers.
Yeah. I think that outside the small towns, question how much they get out of it.
Yeah. And that's why you have such a limited, you know, I, I think that, uh, you know, and I, and I've said it to Shani, that's. Not, not so much, you know, from the, from the tourism standpoint, as more so than the. Development standpoint is, you know, like Dow City has really been making some major strides lately, and I said, you know, just keep focused on that, help them when they're having their car shows. And they're doing that stuff, you know, I mean, they're, they're, they've actually been probably growing better than Denison lately, when you're talking about your, your small businesses on, on Main Street. And uh, I think Kelly Garrett's a, a chief pusher now, and I said, go out there and get that guy involved, and, and, and then make value for him to be involved. I said, that's, that's kind of a plus for us, cause I mean, I just bought Edelman's and, and uh, that starts in July, I believe he takes over that. You know, I says he's not gonna change a lot, but uh, you know, I know Kelly, he's kind of a developer, so.
Wouldn't hurt just to knock on his door and call.
That's right, exactly, Cal, you're right, and, and those are some of the things that they've talked about, now they're kinda swapped, being two full timers. And, you know, cause there, Evan's already started to transition out a little bit, he's been working on the ignite or the. The incubator project downstairs a little bit more to try to help get that a little further along, but uh, in any event. Um, see, but you know, they're, they're trying to make do with what we can afford to give them with what they could, you know, they. To just go out and start recruiting people and get them all in right away, it's gonna be a bit of a challenge, you know, cause economically. In a business in America, it hasn't felt a little bit of a pinch, you know.
I will say this, that just listening to people and, you know, from west of us, Manona County, that's a whole different deal. I think maybe kind of spurred some of us that Gene's point of contract with somebody, I think Manona County kinda does that now with Sioux City. I forget what the, it's uh, you go to WIT to meet with this Todd, I think is his name, up there. And kinda helps maybe to the extent that Evan is, so.
Maybe I'll talk to Jay about, uh, we'll talk to you.
But I'm not saying that's the right answer, but I think that, cause I'm not. From what I gather, this. Evan's been doing a job to where, you know, he puts out more information in a timely manner to where there's some of that kinda lost and. Going to Sioux City.
Yeah, and you just, my, my only fear of something like that is how far on their, high up on their priority list will you be? You know.
Correct.
And that'd be my.
Yeah, like I say, it's a consortium of, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I have Manona, Woodbury County kinda, kinda cool with resources for that deal.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It might be type of that, it might just not be a full-time job, you know, and that the. Uh, people run in the office now can take care of the smaller details, and just have somebody that focuses exclusively on that, that's their specialty. So I think it's hard to find somebody that has, gets all the boxes and exactly what we're looking.
And it's part of the job, that's part of the board's job then, is to make sure that we stay relevant to this person.
You know, type is like, is Carroll, Shelby, Cass, do they all have their own?
Funny you mentioned that we have a guest in the audience from a neighboring county.
Okay.
Scott is, Susan Johnson is a supervisor in Carroll County.
So we just, our economic development just rebranded itself to Carroll County Growth Partnership, cause it was kind of Carroll centric. But we, yeah, they wanted an increase this year, and we're getting, I'm enjoying this conversation, we have a media, new in Carroll, but um. They wanted an increase in funding and we kept it level, and there was talk about lowering it, but for the same reason. You know, make a merit base, what are you bringing to us?
It sounds like the same thing we, we were talking about, you gotta focus on the whole county, not just.
Exactly. Some of our smaller towns have their own Manny, Kun Rapids, they have their own chambers for economic development. And they really go after the grants, but, though, I'm enjoying the conversation, continue.
Appreciate you.
Nice, nice, nice to have you, I appreciate you being here. Um, before I miss this, Dave and Pam, you know, that we, we, we cut their overtime. So they're trying to figure out a way, you know, reduced obviously both their salaries, you know, in, in the long run. So they were trying to figure out some ways to help find a little. Satisfaction, I suspect for lack of a better word, and uh, they were in here, their day was in here this morning and brought forth the idea that. If they would, uh, each, every other Friday, one of them would take off half a day early. That's the day they usually clean the annex or will be the city center, uh, so basically. Not give a, not, not do four tens, mind you, but you know, they, they take off five, five hours early on that day, so they'd still work like what they normally do now. And uh, I'd have to have him come in, and he's gonna be in later when he talks about the elevators, if you guys wanna ask him some questions about that, but it sounded. Pretty amicable to Gene and I that it would be something that would work, you know, they're, they're taking a pay cut, you know, try to find some uh. Satisfaction and, you know, and overall pay, and I mean, yeah, we're just cutting their overtime hours, but in a sense, we're cutting their pay at the end of the year.
I gotta ask then, I mean, we didn't cut their pay, we just said we're not gonna schedule overtime. And I, 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 like, I, we had this conversation before, and I talked to David, just that if the work is there, you need to have overtime, by all means. Do what the courthouse needs to keep it up. But to this, sounds like they wanna take a Friday off and that they're not gonna have overtime. So I guess.
So they won't stagger their shifts then? Like you originally planned for them?
Right, or.
That, that's just a broke proposal brought forth.
Or I guess, I mean, it doesn't matter.
I, I, I didn't rest, I think it would be a pay cut, because the work might not be scheduled with extra two hours every week, but maybe in the winter time, or maybe. You'd make up the difference because there's, they were putting that work in to do what they do, but.
Whether it's snow or move, you gotta move it now.
And then Dave has his overtime when he comes in, when they call for the tower stuff or whatever.
Part of it is they like to come in early and get the annex vacuumed before people get there, so that was a point that he brought up, you know, you have to get in there and get out, so.
They do that every Wednesday and Friday.
And I don't have a problem with overtime, as long as, you know, they're doing what they, they need to do to keep things maintained.
But I think mandatory overtime that you get it regardless is the only things, and I think they understand that, you know, if we have snow or if there's a project. Uh, you know, and taking that Friday off, if there's not a whole lot going on, you got your work done, why stick around just because your hours are just to that?
Are they based on anything over eight in a day is overtime? What is that?
That's how they're currently scheduled. And a half a day.
Is there anything in the?
Just goes over forty a week though, doesn't it, or is it every day? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, cause some, that's what I wanna know, some positions, some jobs are. Yeah, because some, that's what I want to know, some positions, some jobs are anything over eight hours.
Yeah.
A day, so if you work eight and a half, you get a half hour.
Overtime, even if at the end of the week you don't have forty?
Exactly.
You also have to have.
Good question, though.
So if you were ten hours one day.
That's what I want to know. And they still get ten up two hours overtime.
You probably got a pretty short schedule today.
Twenty minutes in there, look at that.
I'm I'm gifted, what can I say? I didn't even have to do all the talking this day, I was down. So.
Talking about the ten hour schedule.
We haven't even started talking about you guys yet.
We'd we'd really run over if we're talking about you guys. Ben, if you'd like to give us your your engineer update, we'd appreciate it.
You mentioned, well, Paul did bring, I mean. Bringing up the proposal for ten hour workdays for the secondary roads, which I assume maybe he's visited with.
Was not the agenda, so it couldn't take.
You know, well, when Becken came down and asked if anything needed to be on agenda, I'm Paul guy. Thought that was a discuss to come up to to talk about that today, so, but uh, but yes, um, he did send that up for you to sign and.
We need to make a motion to approve it, correct?
Well, we don't have.
Do we have to stamp that and make everybody's on there?
Have a blank one that doesn't have an opposing signature on it? Oh, it's got the bargaining unit, okay, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll stamp that.
Okay, well, we would, uh, we've we've had this discussion about the four tens running during the timeframe that's on there. I, because we didn't do that from Memorial. It's a May fifteenth of twenty twenty-three to September fourteenth of twenty twenty-three, and that works with the paper, that's what it does. And has anybody got any other questions about this before we get started?
Clarifying that, that is following what Shelby has already had in place for ten years.
Exactly.
Yeah, I believe it's a carbon copy of what Shelby is, uh, been doing. Other than the two, I think the two I and J that.
Right, it says twelve there, but it says fifteen there.
Okay.
It's just like yours.
The work times six to four thirty and then gravel haul the handle is.
For normal?
For normal.
Yep.
That's normal for each territory.
And that's just how many people go up to that other than the motor grader operator that's in that district, there's just Casey and.
Paul, oh, there's going to be mostly part timers that are going to be filling that gravel haul anyway, other than like the blade man when they're in the. When they're in the territories, so.
Right, right. Yeah, bringing in quite a few part-time guys to assist with gravel haul and uh. Yeah, that's just secondary road guys, uh, us in the office will will still be working the five days and. And uh, same with the the um, Casey and Brent, uh.
Casey and Brent will still be on five days as well.
Right, yeah, they'll have to work with contractors and stuff, so. Yep, yep, yeah, they need to be around five days.
Okay, I think that pretty much set, does that settle everybody's worries about this?
Yeah, I think Gene made a motion.
Gene, did you make the motion?
Make the motion that we approved that.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Mr. Hayden made the motion, Mr. Mobauer seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor states of I say an aye? Oppose nay? Kerry?
Bridge going on, uh, you know, we have gotten a couple calls, uh, now regarding, uh, you know, the gravel that people are finding their way around. And you're being up that direction, Ty, I didn't know if you've seen a lot of increased traffic on that.
I gotta look, I gotta stop at the intersection, I'll look.
You actually stop now so you don't get hit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've actually seen quite, I was, I just went the other day and drove it.
I try to drive it every, at least every morning, every other morning.
Yeah.
Well, I got, I drive and check a couple neighbors' houses and stuff for them, I will draw them out there anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, last week it was a, it was a, it wasn't pretty, but it wasn't bad.
I know they're trying to keep it maintained, I was gonna, just talk to guys, see if. See, other, uh, the last time I was up there was last week and uh, it did look too bad, it looked like it could use a little bit more.
It looks good today, the rain, I mean, when it was wet, it had it all packed out and tight, but as soon as it dried off, the gravel fluffed back up and. Yeah, there probably is a couple spots that need, like I said, it's it, it's not bad.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not all rutted up or corbed up.
Yeah, we got a little bit of that going on, yeah, but things are drying up and uh. Yesterday morning, you, you know, the first couple hours, they weren't really able to get out and do a whole lot of blading, but then things warmed up and uh. They actually got quite a bit of blading going on.
That cold actually helped freeze dry our roads.
Yeah.
Drying them off.
But yeah, it's still got some glows, roads are still soft and getting some gravel on them.
Be soft till we get a thunderstorm.
Get a good warm work, get a good rain. Any any other complaints you're getting around the rest of county? I seem, I, when I was doing some driving around, I I found some soft spots, but.
They're slowing down. No, uh, basically the roads, uh, is, uh, you know, there's, there are some soft spots, that's that's the majority of the complaints, uh. We did have one gentleman's, uh, no, call, I didn't catch the name, but uh, uh, they were blading that detour gravel route. And it must have, must have been on, crept over on his side of the road, uh, but that, uh, you know, the maintainer needs to, that's data aside, but uh. Aside from that, uh, and uh, mostly just gravel issues, so.
I find that, I find that ironic, so they were off, they're out of the ditch and into their property line, or I mean, we got. We got thirty-three feet each side of center to maintain a roadway, so.
I think it was more into driving, uh, you know, the, or maintainer was over on his side of the road.
Oh.
The maintainer delayed about smucking.
Right.
Drive down the middle of the road.
Was it no man?
Well, I will, I will state that there's a lot of people that are using the driving on gravel, so uh. They take their half out of the center, I guess, I'm not gonna say it.
Yeah.
We used to own the gravel.
I've had to get over quite a long way just meeting vehicles now, so.
Well, that's no kidding.
Somebody called wondering when they're going to get some gravel, I said, spring.
Make sure everybody being curious, want to share in the road.
Hell, you know what? We don't need any entanglement.
How's that? Exactly. Yeah, then that on the bridge, they're gonna start driving pile today, I believe, on the, this side here and uh. They're gonna get started on that, which is just impressive, uh, considering.
What's that? As soft as the ground, it should go in.
I tell you what, there's, some of the people I've been talking to over there, they were pretty, they were saying, how can they work already? I wouldn't thought they'd have started until it was warm, don't complain, we're open to be done by July, that'd be really good.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, that'd be really good.
Oh, they'll drive a pure pile all around here, that's uh, they're getting right after it, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm pretty impressed, actually.
Yep, they'll do the pure pile, I believe, with the south of Buckman pile, and then they'll move around to the outside and just get started, start right over there, so.
That'd be nice to have that bridge corrected and widened out, that would be nice.
See, they said in their pulse work plans this morning, um, so we'll be looking at them and.
Okay.
Okaying them and. Yep, moving along, so.
Outstanding.
So from that, uh, grading crew, they'll probably be firing up here, you know, talking to Sean, you know, there's still some frost to come out of there, I don't want to start doing any kind of dirt work just. For probably another couple weeks, but they'll, they'll start firing up operations here maybe in a couple weeks and weather pending and.
You know, I talked to the city manager in Manning yesterday and I had to do some digging and he couldn't believe with the moisture we had in that cold weather. How it drove frost back into the ground and he said they had a layer of frost that, you know, a week ago was gone, or they thought was next to gone and. Here it is back again and just such an up and down.
Winter crazy winter, that's no doubt.
Sure, nice hall and bale for Kyle, they're all strove.
You didn't have to sink into the ground? Slide around the field?
Yeah.
Well, outstanding. Anything else for us?
That's all I, well, this guy's still going, so. Not much else to report anyhow.
Alright, sounds good. Thanks, Ben. Thank you, Ben.
Would you scan this in to us?
I sure will.
Can you get a chance front and back, please?
You betcha.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good week.
Yep, see you, Ben.
Alright, I had one thing that I didn't get to bring up that I really want to, because I, I s- I scribbled my name in. Dave and I were talking and we thought it'd be good if we had a representative on NACO. And then I was kind of gung ho about doing, I still am kind of, but I, the, we're sitting here cut, 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 cutting everybody and this isn't going to be cheap. The rooms, and I got one of the lesser expensive ones, was like, gonna be like twelve hundred dollars for the event. It's, it's a five-day deal, five nights.
You're talking to the.
And I did, I. What 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 is our mileage rate?
Sixty-three cents a mile.
Sixty-two and a half, yeah. So I figured that out and actually I can fly down there cheaper than I can drive down and back. Uh, but that was like five hundred and fifty bucks, or it's seventeen fifty, and then the conference itself. Was uh, five hundred and, ah, damn, I don't remember all these numbers off the top of my head, but five hundred and thirty, I did this last Thursday. And so it's, you know, you're looking at twenty, just call it twenty-five, short of twenty-five hundred and that's. I mean, I didn't figure any meal, I don't know what what's all paid for meals and that, you know, so hopefully that's not, I mean, and I'm not worried about the meal stuff, I'm just saying. It it's, it's a bit pricey, now, will it give us some? Oh, you know, and it's another voice in the, on the national stage, you know, on the federal level. Um, that was what, you know, Dave and I talked about, you know, the contacts you made, the network and. Um, the influence you get to have on rural boards, I'm, I know I talk a lot, but I also get my point across a lot too. So I mean, you you got that value on special, on especially the rural aspect, Kyle, Stacker, Stacker. Yeah, he's a, and he's on my CD, Central Iowa Board, so I I know him pretty well, uh, he goes. And who else did you mention? Very, very goes.
From Clay, Richard Crouch.
Carl Vanderweir goes.
Carl Vanderweir goes.
And I don't want to spend any of our county money on my own, I mean, Dave and I talked about it, so I mean, I I I feel that Dave feels like it's a good idea, but. You know, in a year that we're especially starting to crunch, I mean, I, I don't want to have a guilty conscience. You know, I mean, well, I go down there and and make sure that Crawford County gets the best voice it can, he better well, but, but uh. I mean, I I don't want to take this on without the board's preapproval, you know, Kyle said that he had a thrifty board previously. And. No, Kyle said. Kyle said he. Kyle had a thrifty board previously and and he he only did the uh, one when they went to Washington. You know, to actually set up right, right, ready, you know, leg legislation and what have you, and it works the same, NACO works at the federal level, just like ISAC does for us here. I mean, as far as like Dave bringing us information back on what they're working on and then we say, hey, can you kind of help push this or that, you know, I mean. You'd like to think we have a voice, but you know what, every one of our congressman or our House of Representatives down here, the senators. You know, they're always telling us, well, this isn't what ISAC's telling us, or this is what ISAC's telling us, you know, have them work with us more or whatever. I mean, so it sounds to me like they may have, ISAC has a voice, so I assume that NACO's got a voice on the federal level, of course. Federal level does more what the hell they want than the state does, but, but uh, I don't want, I. I I can go back in there and pull my reservations pretty easy if you guys don't think it's a fiscally prudent. You know, especially this year, I thought I'm not going to do it on my own accord here.
When was the last time someone from Crawford County went?
I don't know if we've ever had anybody for NACO, ISAC, yes, but not NACO.
I don't know either, I don't, Segumard or some of them guys back.
I don't.
That I, I don't ever recall anybody.
You know, and and I did, I did uh, talk with Bill down there at ISAC and and. And had a nice long conversation with him about what would be the best, he thought if I was on the Rural Action Caucus. And then he also said the Rural Ag, you know, on agriculture and and food stuff, so if I was on them committees. Uh, I actually wanted to be on transportation for obvious reasons, you know. And he said, well, that one's always full, and I said, really? I mean, right away, I'm thinking, how many truckers do we have that are supervisors, but you know, there's all, it's it's, NACO isn't just supervisors, you know, I mean. Though a lot of the people that do this are supervisors and engineers, it's full of engineers because it also works with the road money. Which I said, you know, that's great, but if you got all engineers on it, you're not, you're not going to get the diversity of opinions and ideas that. I'm going to bring to the table and trust me, I I'm never shy about making sure my part's heard. And those are some of the things that I've actually lobbied on, both state and federal before. So I think that's probably where I'd be a better, better asset, but maybe not this first year.
Is this their annual convention?
Yeah, this is the annual, this is their annual convention, basically like ISAC has two, you know, in the spring they use that one to. Go down there and the day at the Capitol, so they have one that's in, when did they, was it February?
Yeah, they just.
I think February they just.
There was one on DC, in DC.
That's DC, which is also not cheap, if you've been to DC, you know that, you know, it's not cheap to go to, so I mean, do. I don't want to, I don't want to take this expense on on my own, because it's obviously going to be something that'll have to be in our budget. You know, I mean, plane ticket, paid rooms, sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Here's what I, what I, well, I told you, i- if you're really engaged and you you have the. You know, the will to go and really make the most out of being a part of something like that, talking to the guys like Richard Crouch and Kyle. Barry, they say it's invaluable, you you don't know what doors it can open up and the things that you can get out of. Um, having somebody from Western Iowa step up on a national level from our our county is admirable. I agree, so I'm I'm behind that a hundred percent, I know what you're saying with our budget.
Yeah, I just, I didn't, I want to, I want this board to be in on whether we do or don't, I mean, either way, I'll I'll I'll. I'll I'll give the, I I should be healthy as as a horse by then. It is, uh, at the end of July, I'll I'll miss the fair, so Kyle, you'll have to mouth goats against David.
But I think if if you're going to send somebody or, if a county was going to send somebody that was, didn't want to do the work and put the time in. Of course it would be worthless, you send somebody who's active and wants to be active.
Well, that's like I told Bill, I'm not going to go, I I said, I'll go down there, he said, well, I said, re- recommend you just go down there and watch and learn the first year as well. I'm not going to spend that kind of money, Bill, if I'm not down there doing so, I said, I got to be on the job. That's in, that's just for me, I mean, and I can't assume you guys feel any different, but I said, if I'm on a committee. And I, especially like the rural steering, you know, Rural Action Committee, you know, that's steering policy for the rural counties, then I. How many times do we sit here and I'm sure Carroll County isn't any different, you know, but we feel like we, most of the time we're getting ignored. Uh, here on in Western Iowa, you know, I mean, we watch everything that's going on in our cities, you know, at least Council of Us gets a little attention, but you know, I mean. Things that'll help generate interest for us is one of the, so if I do it, I mean, I'm going to go, I'll I'll be involved, you mentioned that.
Um, since you brought it up, Scott, didn't Gene go to NACO?
He does go to him, he's not going this year, but he does go to.
Yeah, and what does he bring back for you guys? I mean, he.
Says he makes a lot of contacts and, um. Yeah, I can't give you any, uh.
But I mean, as a board, you guys are behind him and.
Yes, yes.
Feel like it's valuable?
Yeah.
That's neighboring county, right there.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, I just, I didn't want to do anything without you guys, you know, kind of knowing what's going on, I I already. Have been doing some research, you know, on on things that I can be part of down there, I think. When you show some values, just like anything, once you show your value to the organization, you might, you know, just like Dave, and I snagged him right up for the board. Once he showed that he would do the district level, so I think that, once they see what you can do, and maybe I talk too much, so maybe this.
I think it's good time to step outside of the box, you know, we've been, if we've been doing the same thing all the time, I think. It'd be wise to get some different perspective and see not just what, you know, ISAC lets you know what other counties within our state are doing. But I think it would be valuable to find out what are, you know, what's a county in Wyoming doing that's rural, that's. Um, and I think that might be invaluable and it's, it's worth to try something, one time you might come back and say, you know what?
Guys, that was a waste of money, but.
Right, but we, how else do you know?
But you know, this is their summer conference.
And I think.
So they're ready to send, you'd be the one to send, you know? Well, thanks, but I I think if you got the the vendors there, that's what I'm, that's what I was thinking about. You know, there's a lot of vendors there, so you might stumble into the right one that gets the right count, you know, I mean, I'm always looking at developing or doing, doing more or saving more.
It's Crawford County, I mean, we just heard, I guess, that Carroll County goes there, but you try to differentiate yourself from your competitors. And, um, you know, what, what can you learn? And um, you know, what, what can you learn there that can bring back to make Crawford County different, more valuable? To a potential developer or to a potential employer, you know, I think that's what, to see if you, see if you get that. Those kind of assets there, you know?
And you know, the thing.
Find out.
And I, and I was actually like, when you're doing the DC trip, if you uh. If you're out there and you're getting rumblings of grant opportunities or any of that kind of stuff. You know, um, development things are going on, whether it's, you know. Transportation wise or or watersheds, different, different things that we're actually always looking for. You know, I mean, just stumbling into the right time, you know, if you're, if you uh, if you're not out there involved, you're, you're not gonna hear about a lot of. So that's, that's, that, that to me was the pluses that Dave and I talked about.
I don't think the board has a problem with it, I, I think you can move forward to be in next year's budget, so we'll have time to work. Good point. I think just move, my opinion is move forward with it, it's never gonna hurt Crawford County to.
I'll leave the reservations in as you stand.
Unless I find out that Mary Anderson, every guy's paid for it all out of their pocket.
They might be rich.
They probably cut cards in one county.
I was literally trying to think of ways to make it cheaper and I thought, oh, I'll just drive my pickup down there. And then I thought, well, then I'll just pick, charge them, I'll just goof off a little bit on the way home, cause I got family down there, so if I take the pickup down. I'll just charge the county to, for the gas money down. And then I started looking at that and I'm, well, that ain't gonna work either, it's gonna cause more for just to get down on the sixty, on the sixty-two cents. Can I use the bridge?
Sure, you'll love it and you'll wanna have it.
Feel like, I feel like I said like that when I just see you get in it. I know you told me Jerry fits, so I'm pretty sure I should be able to.
Absolutely.
So anyway, I wanted to run that by you guys, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to sell it one way or the other, I just didn't, I, you know, if I get, if I go down there, I'll, I'll do my best.
Sounds like you have a consensus that.
Alright, thanks guys, so anyway, we're at uh.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, oh, we're after ten, sorry.
Yeah.
You said you can't.
But I can fill time, I know it, discuss and take action. Uh, change request number one, courthouse number one floor, first floor restroom renovation, alright, this is on the doors, correct?
And the change order number one is zero, right?
Option, so there's two options, this change request number one, option one. Excuse me. Is similar, sorry about that, this is um, pretty much exactly what's in the contract currently. It's furnishing three new doors, um, the, the deal is they cannot match our, our molding. So each of the doors has a framed area, I believe it has three of them, maybe four, anyway, that molding.
Three.
Yeah, and uh, anyway, um, so the molding will not match exactly. So in the contract, we're using three existing doors and there'll be three new doors, the new doors will not exactly match.
But the wood, wood colors and stuff will be.
The colors will be the same, um, and also option two is. Six new doors and that has a cost, of course, almost eleven thousand dollars. So, and the, the option one would be zero cost because it's actually what's in the contract and what's been proposed to them.
These ties go on the NACO, we can't do options. People say, why don't the doors match? That's what we discussed last week, so I make a motion to approve a change request number one.
Second.
For restrooms.
Change request number one's been made in motion, second, that was by Schultz, second by Dozart, any further discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, states, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Uh, courthouse sidewalk repair. Dave, you wanna come up and inform us on all the little details of that?
Well, we've got some areas that are cracking that need to be replaced, we've got spares need ground. Just some of our trip hazards and stuff and everything, basically just trying to get everything to, around about to. ADA and everything and stuff where we are replacing it and stuff, cause we will modify some stuff over on the uh, southwest corner.
Just modify.
Um, something with the slope of the sidewalk and stuff, um. When ten point was here, when my friend was here, we walked around and he was explaining to me that they changed, has to be closer to ADA approved. And stuff like our little area over here on the southeast side. Where it slopes down where the use, where we consider was accessibility for a wheelchair is not actually ADA approved. Because they have to have room to go up, turn totally around and stuff and then go, but since we're not messing with that area, it's. Okay, so where we're modifying anything, anything we have to change to be ADA approved is. What we're doing, I guess.
I suppose when they do that, now they actually figure ADA is for like the go-kart wheelchair.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, it would take a little bit more room than a.
Yeah.
Normal wheelchair, what we consider.
Yeah, um.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, um, we only have one bid on it, um, I tried, I had Smith come up and look at it, he never came in with a bid. I tried calling hide in concrete, the phone was always, mailbox was full, couldn't leave a message. Terry, Terry tried emailing and stuff too, to try and get contacted with them and nothing came about of it, so.
So that's what.
We have to progress with what we have.
But can they not start till September, is that?
That's right, I told them as long as, it's ready for when we start doing snow.
Yeah.
We're good to go, cause that should eliminate a lot of our cracks.
That was, which ones was it?
Ten point.
Ten point.
Yeah, um, and everything that they take out and put back in is gonna be tied to the other one, so we shouldn't have a lot of extra shifting and stuff anymore. So if we're tying new into old, everything should stay level and stuff and everything, so.
They've got a lot of years of experience, I'll do a good job.
Yeah, yeah, so and my, my friend's very impressive with that, they were going and I'm talking about stuff he knows and stuff.
And through research, you know, Terry was in contact with the city and Dwayne in regards to the agreement.
Right.
And it all.
Right, the bricks and mortar agreement that you talked about, you brought up last week.
At first though, it kinda was.
Right. Right, I tried to talk to Dwayne and he explained what the intent of the contract was. Um, it does not involve the city, it is all county's responsibility to repair.
Okay.
That would come on next year's budget then, since it wouldn't be done till September. Right. Uh, second.
Gene, you made the motion?
I did.
Gene, uh, Mr. Hayden makes the motion. To utilize ten point for this concrete work repair, seconded by Mr. Mulbauer, you got all that scribbled in? Oh, you're ahead of me, good, could you go, all in favor, states so by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Okay, and now, uh, hold on a minute, Dave, alright, discuss and take action, annex elevator repair proposal.
Yeah, um, first estimate we got was from TK Elevator, which is who installed our new one here. And so, and I came in and I thought it seemed kind of expensive and I did some checking and I found out that a company out of Eastern Iowa. Could, was working their way this way, they've got an office in Sioux City and they would do work in this area, they do some work here in town actually too. Um, Schumacher, so I contacted them, so they could give us an estimate also. And uh, in doing so, ended up seeing that they were about half as much as what TK was gonna charge us for the same. Repairs, that's to get the elevator up to code, so we can sell the building.
Did you get any, any, who, who, you talked to somebody about it, so you got a little reference on their.
Yes, I talked, I talked to a friend of mine, he recommended that they do a good job and stuff and.
City of Madison uses them, or Church, he's a Schumacher.
Oh, okay.
Excellent, they're very good.
Well, I hadn't heard of it before and stuff, so, but I'm glad we have a second.
Got references on the board, that's.
Um, if I contact them and stuff, um, it'd probably be within a couple of weeks, probably, and it's only about a four hour job. But, and they said if it takes longer, that's what the job costs. But doing it would be more expensive, is if they tore it apart and they found parts inside that needed to be replaced.
It's in our package, you know, what was the total cost that I saw, but not.
Schumachers was thirty-two fifty.
Right, so they're, they're not combined? Those, the two things in the elevator bids, I mean, there was one from Schumacher.
One from TK, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are totally separate.
Yes, okay, yes, yes.
Same project.
Same project.
Different quotes.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah, okay.
It was like seven thousand or something.
It was sixty-three, just over sixty-four hundred.
I took it as there was two separate jobs.
Oh, no, same job.
No, it's the same job, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we could save about three thousand.
Alright.
Good job, it's fine.
I'll make that motion to approve Schumachers to do the repair on uh.
Mr. Mulbauer makes a, makes a motion for the Schumacher.
Second.
To be. Gene already made it.
Okay.
I waited for when he was completely done talking.
Mr. Mulbauer makes motion, this Hayden seconds, any further discussion? Harry, none, all, all in favor, states so by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay?
One more thing before I, before I leave, I was talking to Ty, we're putting the warning system on our air compressor down in the basement. That's what controls the valves for the heat, um, last Wednesday, the air compressor quit because of. Exactly, anyway, we didn't have any air, we didn't know until I walked in the building that it was hotter than eighties in here. And stuff, because everything's at max heat, so I had to shut the boilers off and stuff and contact um, Carroll Controls. And they.
A little warm in here, Terry?
And uh, I know one officer of theirs was eighty-four.
Whoa.
And stuff, so, um, so we're putting a warning system on her, so I'll give a text message. If we have that problem again, it'll, it runs from fifty-five at the max pressure. Um, down to forty is where it runs, forty is where it's supposed to kick on, um, the warning deal is gonna warn me at thirty P S I. If it gets down to thirty, then I'll get a warning, so I can come up and hit a deal with it.
Does that happen much previously, is it kind of?
Well, it's just bad when it does.
Right.
And it's gonna be a fairly simple repair because um, Carroll Controls could put a warning deal right on the tank. That's already been done, um, and then um, Corey Gaskell from Manila that does the IT installation stuff here. He'll be coming in either today or tomorrow and he said, basically on his end, it's a little bit of wiring. Cause a part of the system is there, he'll use the warning for the one door and stuff, so. Actually, he said, I'll spend some time just some wiring and a little labor. So it's gonna be a pretty simple project, but it'll save excellent from, yeah, a problem hopefully.
Okay, thanks Dave, keep up the good work, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our ten fifteen, we're getting closer to catching up, uh, city center remodel.
I didn't put it on, but um.
You asked for it to be put on.
Yeah.
Oh, last week?
Last week.
There you did.
I did, I believe you. I mean, we weren't able to, we didn't hold that ARPA committee meeting, so I don't know if that's why we have a.
But, yeah.
Right, this explains, um, so the front page shows current spending, what's been spent in regards to. Um, well, at, at the top it shows the revenue we've received, ARPA three point two six seven million. Um, and then the next, that FEH design, that is the design of the first floor restroom. Um, there's still just um, a few thousand, just under four thousand dollars left to spend out of that. Area, um, and then the restroom renovation. Um, will be in next year's budget. The, um, let's see, city center, building purchases out of there, the two hundred and eighty thousand. Um, advanced communications, the money that's been spent so far out for the server room. At the um, city center location. And then the next is the scanning project that is currently in works and about half of that's been spent so far. So, and then on the second half of the page, the backside that shows future spending. It shows the remainder of all those projects that have been started. Um, the probation office remodel, that should happen yet this year, not necessarily this fiscal year, but this calendar year. Um, the commitment that the county has made to the wellness center is out of there. Um, you all had talked about approximately a million dollars for the tower project, so that is mentioned on there. Um, and I think, um, I just, I drew in an estimation of city center remodel up above. But that, I mean, you know, there's, that's not etched in stone anywhere, that's just to get an idea of some money. Coming out, so leaving um, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of ARPA funds.
Yep. We had the request from the childcare side, that's, none of that's.
Yeah. Yeah, there should be plenty to handle any of that kind of stuff.
Both of those.
Depending what that remodel amount ends up actually being or that you all want to put towards that, so. So yeah, this was gonna be presented to that ARPA committee.
Hopefully we can do that this.
Yeah, we're gonna tie into it Friday, so if you would like that item on the next week's agenda rather than.
So then just continue the city center remodel project in the next week's agenda, since you guys will have a chance to.
And I had a chance to, uh, have, uh, the gentleman who would be maybe considering, uh. Being the uh, general contractor was not able to get into the building, so.
Glenn, I'm assuming you're over here because of this item on the agenda, did you have anything to add? Okay, you're here for the budget, oh yeah, that's a good, alright, okay, so moving on to the ten twenty-five. How fast I caught it, so boy. Uh, land management agreement, Mr. Schultz.
This is Colin.
Colin.
Thanks. This is a, an update of agreement that we've had in place for ten years, this uh. Cleaned it up a little bit, as far as I'm concerned, it got rid of some unnecessary stuff and added the uh, Aurelius property in as well.
Yeah.
Spelled out.
I think it explains that the.
Responsibility is better.
The leasur um, retains ten percent of the CRP funds that are collected for the county. Um, ninety coming to the county and then of that ninety, um, half will go to pheasants forever for their land management. And the half remaining with the county.
Correct, so is that what the old contracts said also?
Hmm, not exactly.
It didn't have a, it a lot more words than it did, to an extent, is it a endless a dollar amount, so just gotta clarify.
There was some old language in there about when Denise and Jim Reiser were the leasers of the county farm and.
I see, name them specifically.
When, yeah, when pheasants forever came on board as um, helping to develop nesting areas. For pheasants, um, some of that old language is in there and it, I think it just made it complicated. And now that we're so many years away from that, um, it just needed to be cleaned up.
And it tied to conservation, or conservation board, yet what truly had.
Right, and I think that's just to maintain a public hunt area, but, yeah, I don't know, so.
Clean it up with Colin and Martha's help, Terry's help and.
Essentially, the only blank left is in that first paragraph, besides the date, is how many total acres are gonna be involved, that, that's the only blank that I saw.
I don't know.
And I think it's just because we didn't, we need, uh, maybe, uh. Myself on that, just to kind of get a, an estimation of the acreage, I mean, it's not a critical piece, cause the, the land is outlined in that agreement.
Be able to produce that pretty easy, I'm sure, so. I mean.
And this is the board's portion, um, I mean, uh, the. Still needs to be signed also by Pheasants Forever, um, so we can certainly get that in before it's all completed.
But Kyle, you say it's been a good partnership.
Yeah, it has been a good partnership, uh, you know. The length of the, the length of this, to the one year.
It runs a year, it renews in September unless. It runs a year, it renews in September unless notice is given beforehand. So if anything goes wrong, you need to have a separate lease agreement uh with the lease tenant. Or if either the owner of the county or the manager doesn't spread or wanna back out, they have until September thirtieth to provide that. Otherwise, it just renews on that.
Which I think is key component, because it wouldn't do the board with whatever ends up going on. If nothing changes, it just perpetually renews.
It was a back out.
Leave a setback. With this agreement.
Right, and it kind of falls in line with our county farm lease, right?
And we are on the third year of our county farm lease, so we need to give termination notice.
Yeah.
So that it can go up for if we just continue to do what we're doing, so it can be running out next year.
And I, as far as the the date, I think we should put it March first.
That's fine. I mean, that's what the contract.
You know, any land generally, a land transaction or deals are on March first to February twentieth type deal, so. But we need to get them acres, but as long, once we get those acres, I'm gonna make a motion to approve it as with the.
Well, the yeah, the land, the land is outlined in the first page, it's just the estimation of the acres is up there.
And who'd you say will have that number?
Eric Goddard.
That's okay. Yep.
Gotcha.
I'm just making sure it wasn't Eric Skud.
No, no, no. Eric is secondary.
Very good. Gotcha.
We'll be able to get those numbers, so I'd make a motion to approve the land management agreement.
No, second copy if anybody wants it.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Schultz, second by Mr. Dozak. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Doc, pose nay, chair votes aye, carries. All right, uh. Thank you for your diligent work on this project, guys, I appreciate that. Uh, tax abatement parcel number zero six two six one three zero 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 four in Charter Oak.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Nunn Meyer, how are you?
Good, you guys? Okay, so this tax, this parcel is for eleven oak, it's a mobile home that was converted to real estate several, several years ago. The Keating property originally.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the city of Charter Oak had approached me quite a while back, asking how to take ownership to this piece so they could clean it up, because it was quite an eyesore. It was only occupied by property coons and anything else that.
Critters.
Yeah, critters. So I put them in touch with the um tax sale purchaser, the investor, and they uh, the investor agreed to transfer this property to them. And now there's some taxes out there, and I'm just asking uh if you guys would consider abating them, it's two hundred and twelve dollars. Thirty dollars of that is interest and adding cost.
Two hundred and twelve even?
Two hundred and twelve even, and then also um consider abating future as long as it's in their possession. They're they're very minimal, their plan to with this property, they had it cleaned up on last week, and I don't know if you've been by it, but I went by it last night to verify that it was gone and it is cleaned up. What they're going to do is the adjacent landowners on each side, I think, will eventually take over. They will sell it to them for a small fee just to recover as much of the demolition as they can, they're not gonna make any profit on it, doesn't sound like.
Yeah.
And then I'll go back on the tax roll.
I'm gonna go back on the tax roll, mm-hmm, yeah. But if we charge them where it's just county funds paying per county taxes, basically, so it's kind of silly not to abate them, in my opinion.
I agree.
Yep, two hundred and twelve is total, most.
That's what to do now, plus the next taxes, because it'll take a year to get it off of the roll, I think, when I talked to Dwayne or stuff yesterday.
Another.
Another maybe hundred bucks.
Okay, we look at three hundred and twelve bucks.
Probably.
Total. To get it back on the tax roll, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's, like I said, it is cleaned up, I went by it last night, and the trailer's completely gone, so.
You won't find it around anywhere, anywhere.
It's it's.
I know where it was.
Uh-oh. Well, at least that eyesore is gone.
I watched where the truck was going.
Eyesore is gone, it's going back on the tax roll, so I'd make a motion.
I just, before you do that, and I'm not, I'm just being a stickler about parliamentary procedure and agenda items. A tax abatement for parcel, it's not a asking for forgiveness of taxes. Can we do that? Mr. Chair, can we do that all with this? Because you're kind of bringing two separate things to us.
Yeah, you're bringing.
So we're asking, I'm asking to abate this time.
Okay.
Then I've gotten ahold of this. At two twelve, I'll get ahold of the city and have them get a form into the assessor's office for future.
Hmm, because we can't.
So we can't do them both right now?
I don't think so.
So you have to come back again for that other hundred dollars.
It might be three things.
That would be three.
Wouldn't the tech, wouldn't the penalties and interest be part of that abatement, the two twelve? I mean, I think I think that should just be one, that's all. Penalties, interest, taxes, that's all the, that's two hundred and twelve dollars.
Okay, so I think, my original thought was that's, that's a different subject than the abatement in a further.
Future.
You're thinking like forgiveness?
I'm asking, my intention on this one, and maybe, maybe I'm not wording it right, but my intention on this discussion today is to abate the two hundred and twelve dollars, what's hanging out there right now.
And that's without the interest, are you?
That is including the interest.
Oh, that's including.
Two hundred and twelve.
And 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 that's listed, I know you didn't have the dollar amount listed.
The total would be, take care of it. That is abatement, the, is that the, what you have, the, those I'm a stickler with, that's not an abatement, that's.
Enemy.
I think it's all abatement.
We're gonna abate it. If it's private, we'd have to forgive.
Well, it's still be a big.
We still need it in past.
I think it's still a big.
It'll be a big.
So I wonder why the previous owner who was, what, a tax sale.
Entigre. They realized that it was junk, so.
Why didn't they?
Think they purchased it.
The last resident that lived in there had permission to go.
The diners?
Huh?
Diners, or is it after them?
It was after them.
Okay.
Yeah, he went up to, he went up to the door.
Oh, I don't think here. Okay, so abatement.
If if you think it's, just the chair, I'm I'm not against taking action, I just want to make sure we're doing.
I don't, and I I think you can include the
We have a penalty.
Penalty in it, and yeah, and I think we have before.
Action.
Well, you're my goodness bird.
But the 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 future one will have to have another motion.
When the, when the new taxes come out, if it's still on there, then I'll come back and ask again at that point.
Yeah.
So all the motion is, is to bake the two hundred and twelve.
Two hundred and twelve even. Okay. Somebody got that?
I think future.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Works for me. Okay. Do I have a motion? Jean, you made the motion, okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dozak makes seconds the motion.
No, just one last question. You said it was converted to, so there's no junk teen certificate required with this trailer house.
Right, we checked on that as well, it was converted to real estate, because Charter Oak doesn't even have a mobile home park. So it was converted to real estate a long time ago, I think probably originally, there's no certificate, or no.
No need for.
No need for junk.
No need for jackets and certificates, yes.
Good. Okay, all.
You already certified it by saying I went up in smoke.
Well, I know what.
But I asked that too.
We, I watched it out through the trailer house up there that burnt very well.
Yeah.
And we still have to get a junkie's certificate.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, and I checked on it because of that reason.
Discussing that, I remember discussing. Okay, call question. I, thank you. Question's been called, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Pose nay. Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a good day, Madam.
You too.
Resolution to approve county attorney has authorized designee for the new opioid settlement.
So um, this is the next round of opioid settlements that are nationwide. They got copies for everyone. Um, the deadline is mid-April. Uh, I think this is the last go around, because last time uh included the distributors and the manufacturers. This go around is when the retail pharmacies may recently come to a settlement um with the state, much like last time. It requires a hundred percent participation by the counties for the state, uh, the settlement negotiated by the state to be enacted. And this time around, it requires, there's five documents that need review and signing. It does not have to be me, that's something you guys should consider. Uh, it can be the board chair, it can be whoever the board wants to designate, it can be Terry. Um, but uh, I wanted to bring to the board's attention, because we are about a month away from from having it uh meeting to be our documents in. Um, and I'd be willing to do it if the board would want me to, and so I'm bringing to the board's attention. And so what the resolution would be, would be to, for the board to authorize me or my designee, uh, which would only be Martha, if anybody, it would probably be me. Uh, because I did the last go around as well. Um, to just review the documents and get the county uh signed up for the statewide settlement, which is also the nationwide settlement. Um, and.
Do you, do you know the?
The money fund amount?
It's going to be approximately fifty billion.
What?
I mean, not that we get.
That would make life a little easier for a couple of years.
So I can go to Washington, D.C.
And I don't know how much Iowa is gonna get, but it's gonna be a fifty-fifty split between the state and then the counties.
Yeah.
And then, like we did with the last one.
Yeah, it's very much in the same vein as the last negotiation.
Do they split them equally, like if there's fifty billion, fifty states, each state's get a billion, or is it?
No, it's proportioned, it's portioned out by impact, which has been uh determined by some big study by some firm somewhere that said, you know, this state, and even it goes even further than the state impact, it goes by county by county, community by community impact. Um, and the bigger the impact in the county, the bigger the percentage of the pie you get.
Right.
And that's all been predetermined, and I don't know, I don't have the numbers on that.
Well, I'm glad that you.
Makes sense.
Volunteer.
Call and do that.
Get all that paperwork in.
I I would entertain a motion that Mr. Johnson be our designee for the opioid settlement.
So moved.
Second.
Move, second is moved by Mr. Dozak, second by Ms. Hayden. All, any other questions? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those know? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
All right, thanks, guys, I will get on that.
Thank you.
Didn't want you to get bored over there, so thank you, appreciate all the help on this. Our opioid people do as well. Madam, do we, or Madam Auditor, do we need to uh stamp and sign any of these?
Land management.
This is the land management one.
Yeah.
Or, so you need to.
Yeah, you all were looking at it, so.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
And then one of these as well, so we caught up. I'm sitting here holding all these papers, I just wanted to make sure, oh, right there. This one you already done, so you're ahead of me, thank you. Thanks, Grace. Okay. I gather we're down to citizens' input. We've got some citizens. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I asked Terry if I could have a couple minutes of you guys' time this morning. Um, I have never met Craig in person, the rest of you, I think, know me, I'm Janine Cook, I have owned the Observer in West Side for twenty years, and the Manila Times for uh since two thousand and eleven, so. Um, Iowa has always been an open meetings, open record state, as the sunshine laws and and uh, right now, there's a bill in the Iowa Legislature sent file five forty-six, uh, which uh has the intention of taking public notices out of newspapers. And I wanted to just uh make sure that you guys are all aware of it and uh give as a newspaper my opinion and and ask for your consideration of that. Um, the, just background, every time you guys have a meeting, Terry and her office, and in the minutes, the claims, and then there's a variety of other uh public notices that we publish. Uh, we have a very good relationship of cooperating back and forth and and do that. Uh, the Observer is also an official newspaper for the Arriba schools and the cities of Arcadia, Rita, Vale, and West Side. The Manila Times is also a public newspaper for the city of Manila and the I K and Manning School District, so. Um, and I'm sure you're probably aware, we get paid by the line for publishing those. Uh, most newspapers, the rate wouldn't be equal to the, to their advertising rate, so it's done as a public service. Um, and uh, public information. Um, the Iowa Newspaper Association several years ago uh began developing a website, um, iowano notices dot org, where every newspaper uh sends in their PDFs of their pages and uh the Iowa Newspapers Association, without charging any more than the rate we get per line, uh, has compiled this uh website. Uh, it's searchable, it's there, it's archived forever. Uh, the, you know, and you can imagine how many uh public notices are printed in the state every week, it's a big, a big job. The, if this bill passes the legislature, uh, public entities would not have the requirement of publishing their notices in newspapers any longer. They would send them into the Secretary of State's office, the Secretary of State's office will develop a new website and be in charge of uh having the public notices. Uh, the public notices would not be archived indefinitely, as they are now on Iowa Newspaper Association's website, after a certain number of weeks, they would disappear. Uh, you know, I I guess we, you can imagine having two hundred and thirty newspapers campaigning towards something, it's it's been in the newspaper, uh, and I did bring you a I brought you copies of la- last week's paper, um, on page two, there's a editorial from the Iowa Newspaper Association explaining of the background and then our viewpoint, and then I wrote about it also in my column, which is on page four. I've also stuck in here a very good summary piece that they developed that talks about what will happen. And Doug Burns, who uh was the former owner of the uh Carroll Paper, uh also wrote a column that is going to be published in newspapers across the state this week, so I just brought some copies of that. So I'll share that info with you. Uh, you know, there's uh lots of ones that you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Um, lots of reasons, you know, in our opinion, for doing it, uh, Terry and I had a conversation on the email transparency, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you guys can all think about your family members, your neighbors, how many of them are gonna go to a website and read what you do at your meetings? Um, you know, there, there's so many people that they don't have a computer, don't have access to the internet, don't know how to use it. Uh, one city clerk I was talking to said, my dad doesn't even know how to turn the computer on, so how, you know? So you can imagine the different groups, I don't, the Iowa League of Cities, Iowa School Board Association are on record as being in favor of it, and they're saying things like it will increase transparency. We don't think that's not gonna happen, you know? Um, I went to the school board meeting last week and did the same kind of presentation, and they said they get comments, the school board secretary, the board president, get comments every single week of, every time they print their minutes of some comments about that they read something or asking questions, and that's why it's done that way. I don't think that's gonna happen if it's on a website and not published. Um, you can still agree, you know, you can still send it to newspapers if you want to, if the law, if the law would pass. Um, you you wouldn't be required to, you still could, and and a couple of my entities did kind of allude to that, that well, if it passes, we still need to publish them, we have to have that information out there, so, um. It's, you know, right now, it's, it passed the Ways and Means Committee on March eighth. Um, our Senator Jason Schultz is a member of the Ways and Means Committee, and he did vote yes to pass the uh bill out of, out of committee. It has not moved since then, and uh it might not, you know, especially after they discovered, you know, the um uh, information that was being disseminated across the state and and we're getting comments, lots of phone calls uh against it from, from people like you, or, you know, school boards, city clerks and things are uh definitely not in favor of it, so, um. Oh, I won't take any more of your time unless you have questions.
Jean, I'm with you, I I feel like it's really gonna affect adversely our elderly population. I I know firsthand with my wife being librarian in Manning, that how many retirees that come in, and that's just their routine, they sit down and grab their local newspaper, she has all the surrounding ones, and that's where they catch up with what's going on, and a lot of them do it in their homes, but.
Yeah.
You're not, you're right. They're not gonna get on the computer.
They are not.
I can't imagine. I mean, when we put a bid out for city center. Well, why, how we're required to by law and we have a slim response. Could you imagine if the contractors were supposed to go search some websites for this?
Yeah.
I have actually had people over in the west side, there are friends of mine that act, they'll call me, hey, I seen the paper where you're doing this, so you're, we're, we're getting it. To me, that means we're reaching people, you know, and, and that's, that's a, that's a big plus, you know, and I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that they're reading yours over there. But you know, it could have either one, but either way, it's, it's, it's a plus. I mean, I would assume down in your area. Manila paper, you know, that seems to reach, I even get, I even got a call, a couple from Arcadia that, so Carroll County's watching us too.
It's, you know, the, the watchdog role of the newspaper is, is very important, uh, you know, and, and not necessarily that the public thinks you're doing anything wrong, but they want to know what you're doing. And, and you know, being a small newspaper owner, you know, Tuesday mornings is when we're putting together this week's paper, we have to have it to the printer. And it's basically, you know, our small staff, we can't sit here all the time, but we do try to uh, you know, make the legal notices easy to read and, you know, lay them out so people can find what they're looking for and, and though we can't be here all the time to, to cover it, we can.
What's your thoughts on, I mean, you've reached out to our legislators. I mean, I'm sure all the newspapers across the state have. What kind of feedback are you getting?
Yeah, um, a variety, uh, uh, you know, right now, like I said, it's been quiet, so, and, and they won't probably move the bill forward unless they think that it's a slam dunk to pass it, so um, I, I got some feedback from some of the other groups. The contacted, uh, well, like our superintendent is also superintendent at E SAC and he contacted his uh, the senator up there and, and he was sure it was gonna be a good thing for schools. And, you know, and so that's why I think it's so important for everybody to be uh, uh, you know, aware of what it's gonna do and, and just it, you know, I did bring Jason's contact info if you'd like to uh, if you'd like to.
I've got it, but you're sure welcome to share. I will tell you though, you know, for your information, if, if you are, are keeping a scan on our agendas prior to meetings, then call any one of the five of us after a meeting and, and if you would like to do little articles, write-ups, I mean, you might not, Dan, Dan can sit here and, and get a good report from us, but I mean, if we, we, we sure would like to keep the people over in Westside and down in Manila informed as well, so you're, you're welcome to call any one of us, you know.
Thank you.
We're on the website.
So, I uh, you know, the uh, Doug Burns's column delves more into the financial part of it, you know, like I said, we do get paid per line. Several years ago, when a bill was introduced, they, there's research showed that they thought thirty percent of the newspapers in the state might close if they did not have the income from, from public notices. And that's, um, in my opinion, a very high number. Uh, but I do look, you know, I read a lot of newspapers every week and there's some that, you know, the very small papers. You know, that income is really, really important and, and you know, I got, in the paper we're working on this morning, I have two full pages of legals between county uh, and this different city minutes and stuff, so it is, it is an important uh, piece of income and Doug talks about that real well in his uh, column that he wrote, so. You know, I mentioned to the uh, one group I talked to this week about it, you know, that, yeah, you know, you're spending money, but I guess they're gonna charge five dollars per legal for all the entities to send them in and they're, and they'll still have to have somebody prepare them and, and take care of that, so you will still have. Plus, the state as a whole is not gonna save money because now they're gonna be paid to maintain that website and, and uh, handle that. Where we're doing it for free because we want to make sure we keep the legal.
You have it for indefinitely, that's actually worth a lot.
And that's, yeah. And I wasn't aware of that till the other day. We had a conference call and we were told, yeah, that, and then they will disappear. They won't be there indefinitely, so.
I think you'd be surprised how many kids and college kids read our papers. I know that was a big deal when I was a freshman, like, oh, most of my class looked forward and they talked about getting the Manila Times. And it just, it was way to look, see what's going on home and, or even our kids in school. I know at study halls, they'll procrastinate, don't wanna do the homework, go grab a paper and flip through it and, I mean, just. Well, they might not read it in detail, but. Never.
And that's on, that's paper in there too.
They're still engaged. We don't see that day to day.
You know, lo- local is the key word, you know, we, we wanna, you know, cover the local. And that's my goal every week is to have something in those papers that nobody else is gonna have. You can't read it anywhere else and, and uh, so that's, that's good. And we do have, you know, both The Observer and The Manila Times have an e-dition, so, you know, somebody in Hawaii can read it at noon on Wednesday instead of waiting two weeks for it to get there in the mail and so um, all legals are in there as well, you know, for anybody to solve it.
Well, I'm a big Benjamin Franklin fan, so I, I get the, the power of the press is important to the success of America.
Well, I appreciate your support. If you're, if you're so inclined to contact Jason and just uh, if it comes to a vote to ask him to vote now and. I like this last line, without them, Iowans won't know what they don't know.
Yeah, so do you, you know about what your percent of revenue would be from public notices?
Yes, I, we went through and, and uh, added it all up and um, I would lose between twenty-two and twenty-five thousand dollars a year if I didn't have any of mine. The Manila Times is about between sixteen and seventeen, so. You know, it's as far as a percentage, I didn't figure that out, but you know, it's uh, and.
Dan, does the, the, Benson, do they know what the, the, what percent?
I don't, I just write, so I don't know.
I don't know if it's just been talked about.
But I think the other thing to consider is that right now it's mandated, that it's required that the counties provide this, and cities provide this information. That requirement goes away, that we can still request the information, but because of changes to the legislation in recent years, they can also charge us to gather that information. So then it becomes another drain for us to try to get that stuff into the, the newspaper because we could call the auditor's office and say, I want this, this and this, and well, here's the fee.
Oh, wow.
So then we have a weekly fee. And, and I don't think that would happen here, but there are definitely some counties that maybe don't have a particularly friendly relationship with newspapers. And it also would be a detriment to newspapers keeping the focus on telling the news it needs to be told, whether, where you, you don't wanna have to worry about whether or not you're gonna lose your access to information. You know, if you, if you go after someone for doing something wrong. So there are a couple of real downsides and one would be that we could potentially.
Well, that's a great point, yeah. That's a great point.
Alarming, when you say that, it's alarming.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's like something that they've thought out very well, but.
Seems like to be the good one, right?
Seems to be the.
Oh, boy.
They started a new technology. Trying to have something to do, you know, or our committee did this, you know. I think they're trying to get the younger people, but they're not forgetting about the older people and so it's kind of.
Younger people get older and like Dave said, he just pointed out where they like to read the, the local paper. At college, that's younger.
He looks forward to it, that's younger people.
And that's how I kept tabs on Grandma where she was going.
I know it. Jean asked where it came from and um, there's a new technology committee in the legislature this year that just, this is the first session that it's been active and, and that's who introduced the bill originally and then went to the Ways and Means Committee.
I wonder what our, I wonder what our population of Crawford would say if all of a sudden next week, we didn't have all this stuff in the paper, because they may not even know about it.
You'd find out, I.
I think you'd find out pretty darn quick. I mean, and, and it's, it's information that, yeah, it's tax money, but it's information they're paying to receive so that they know what we're up to.
And I do have people that they, they, that's the only reason they subscribe is they wanna make sure they get the legals, so it does, it does.
What's frustrating to me, Janine, is that, so this bill comes out, sent um, five forty-six. They never talked to you, they never talked to us. Once again, us locally who value this, never even once were considered in that conversation. Now here we are reacting to something coming out of the state.
Yeah.
That we didn't even think needed to be at the state.
Let's not forget that part.
But yet it gets voted on by Jason as a yes to come out of committee and here we are today.
And sometimes, you know, sometimes.
It ain't went through the house yet.
No, it, no, so it doesn't, it has a long road ahead of it. And so it'll have to.
Be more influential in the house than Jason. Well, Jason's pretty darn influential in the senate.
Yeah, and, and uh, yeah, it'll have to be, if it's brought to the senate floor, it has to pass there, then it has to go to the house and be in committee and so, you know, it, it's got a long ways to go, but um, but they, they need to know that um, the people here on the ground don't want that to happen, so that's uh, one reason I thought I'd.
Would try.
If you want to know our displeasure, pleasure and other things, if I just.
Yeah, we're not having a lot of success getting our displeasure voiced up there this year.
Well, and we, and that was another reason why I thought, I'm gonna go right away because there's been so many things that have passed so quickly.
Thanks for bringing this to our attention.
I was unaware of this.
I had no idea.
Sure, and you're welcome to subscribe, so.
Pretty sure I already do.
So, yeah.
And the county does, we have.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, any other citizens' input? Scott, thanks for coming over today. Hopefully, we didn't bore you to death.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, now we should, we were, look, everybody left for the budget part. That, this is the most exciting part, isn't it?
Did you guys wanna see the region twelve thing at all? Yeah, that was just a. I, I know, I'm just.
You give pretty good reports.
Or I threw it away.
Okay. Budget work session. Shall we start with the top of the list, conservation? That'd be you, Chris. Come on up, come on up, sir. We're cutting everybody forty percent.
Well, which part do you want closed?
Nobody smiled about that. Nobody smiled about that. My comedian days are over. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mike saves some time.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, as everybody knows, we had a little bit of rollback to deal with. Well, we aren't getting hit, hitting the chin as hard as the city did. We did get hit in the chin and, and our uh, budget probably needs to be cleaned up a little bit. One department will probably get hit a lot harder than another, but uh, the rural, the rural, the uh, the rural fund is one that really got hammered the hardest, but uh, conservation. We'll start with.
I wanna talk to Chris at the meeting yesterday. My suggestion was, you know, you got skid loader in, that brush cutter in there. Try to spread that out over, maybe a two-year.
Two-year thing?
That's my thought.
Can we, that's, I mean, we know that's something you've been kinda dragging your feet to get it and you know, we know you need it.
Yeah, that'd be something you could buy at the end of the coming year and then I'm, I'm sure you, you know, you pay for part of it. I don't know how it would work with, if they give you the machine, I haven't dealt with, with that in a while, but I know John Dear, they wouldn't, they wanted payment on the day delivery.
I guess my thought.
I, I, I don't deal with the big stuff too often.
You get one or the other this budget year and then you get the next one, next piece of the puzzle, next budget year.
Right, cause the, the machine itself was, I mean, together it was about a hundred and twenty thousand for the brush cutter and the machine. The machine was like ninety-eight thousand of that.
Is that a tractor, is that a wheeler?
That would be tracked.
Cause getting into some of your brush, you need dollar.
Which, the other part, I know it was discussed amongst us a little bit is how much of that do you perceive of being used, Chris? I mean, once you get the majority of your brush cut down of its main vein, are you gonna, is this something that's gonna be needed annually or is this something that?
I mean, there's I'm not saying we're gonna be brush cutting for hundreds of hours each year, but it's, the trails, there's a lot of trails and stuff that you don't realize are there. Like, like tools timber alone has, I've never added it up, but there's, it's like a hand of trails in there that go a mile or a half mile down, you know, and so there's a few miles of trails, just that tools. And every, every few years, you're, you're pushing them back again, cause the hunter brush comes in. It's a lot of the, I mean, if you wanted to go to town down and, and we've seen Andy did it a little bit in Els Park, like the honeysuckle and the timber, you can, you can spend a lot of time just uh, doing things like that, but I, I don't wanna seem like we're gonna be doing it all day, every day by any stretch, but it'd go in clumps most likely where you, you clear out a bunch and you move to a different project and when you have time in the next year or whatever, and almost like a rotation probably.
Kyle, you brought it, bring in, split it in two years, one in this year budget and then the next. Is there ninety-eight thousand in this year's budget to cover the skid loader?
Right, yeah, we can.
There is enough to cover it.
Yeah, so the, the brush cutter was approximately twenty-two thousand. The machine itself, cause you get the one with, you get thirty percent off the machine, but you don't get thirty percent off like the bulletproof door, resistant door, you know, for brush coming back and killing you. So that, that's an extra like thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand dollars, but you don't get the thirty percent off, at least from cat anyway. I just priced it with cats. So that's the reason the machine is so high. And it's actually a smaller machine than, I, originally I was thinking you'd need like a ninety-five horse machine to, to run this, but they said a seventy-four horse D, uh, two eighty-nine D three would do it. So you're actually, and it's a little bit smaller form factor since it wouldn't be a full-time brush cutting machine. So it was a, you know, because of the, I think the two ninety-nine was like thirty thousand dollars more or twenty-five thousand dollars more, so. But yeah, basically, if you wanna split it up like either this year or the coming year or two years, you're gonna need that ninety-eight, ninety-six, ninety-eight thousand for the machine. And he did, in his price, he had added on what he thought the cost was gonna be for the coming budget, like he knew there'd be, you know, a price increase or whatever. So I, I guess if it was me, you'd wanna do the bigger purchase if you can swing it in the closer budget year. Just in case there's a price increase, it's a price increase on a twenty-two thousand dollar attachment instead of a ninety-eight thousand dollar machine. And never mind having a twenty-two, two thousand dollar attachment city never saw a machine to put it on.
Yeah.
What have they been doing in the past?
Uh, taking weeks and cutting things by hand. And on occasion, we have, especially at Tools, we've had uh, the Monroe County engineer runs a little brush clearing business. So we hire him and have him do a thousand dollars worth here and there. So just push back some of the worst areas and stuff.
Did you continue to do that?
No, no, I've, I've replaced that.
How much does secondary roads have to do with brush clearing? I mean, that they, that got, that they, that would need a smaller machine like that.
I'll just question and concern is, their doc, transferring equipment in their departmental is not, I mean, if Paul comes out and does something for you, he wants paid for it.
A lot, a lot of time.
That's what I was looking at is if, if we're sure, if, if he would go do something for Paul and he gets reimbursed for that, I mean, it's actually, it's in a revenue for we gotta pay somebody anyway, so we just, we just.
A great big one, he put on an excavator that reached.
Yeah, I think he's got different equipment, they got.
I don't know if there'd be a lot of need for that. Calling down the road ditch or something like that, be.
Yeah, I didn't know, that's what I was asking.
It could be though.
He worked there, so.
That wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility if they need to, if they have a spot where it could work, that they could use it or we, or we're running it or whatever.
But you do have ninety-eight thousand in your budget this year to cover it if you, if you bought it by then.
No, that's in the new budget.
No, I know, you're saying put it in this year, so you'd have to make a budget amendment.
Well, I think you meant this year particularly.
Well, I, I'm talking, the, the budget we're talking about that starts in July, then I assume when you mean split it up, you're talking about like two years from now.
Right, okay, I thought you were talking about this year, trying to squeeze it early, and then next, this budget.
That's how I took it anyway.
The, the, the skid loader in this year's that we're working on, and then the next year for the brush.
Together with the understanding, you're gonna split it up over two.
Right, if it's, if you do it the right, if you do it, like say, hey, we wanna do this like in June, and then we're gonna buy the brush cutter, we'll pay for the brush cutter in July, like a year and a half from now, whatever. I mean, that, I, I would imagine that, that could be worked out.
Cuz I, cuz I got down for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget in that line item you've got specifically, a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, and that did include a.
Included, I had forty-five thousand for an F-one-fifty.
Yep.
Ninety-eight thousand for the skid steer, and I'm assuming the twenty-two thousand for the hatch.
Yeah. And the truck is for Nelson, to replace Nelson Park's O eight.
Some of us, we can't, you know, keep kicking that can, sometimes. That is all out of, that's still, just everybody's acknowledge, that's still all out of general basics, so it's not, it's not gonna help the rural.
But we might need general funds to help with what we're losing, if we're trying to clean up our rural, and, I don't know, we gotta just trim where we can trim.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you wanna try and do it with two budget years, I mean, I, I'm fine with that.
Kyle, I also had, where I had highlighted the seventy-eight, seventy-five, was that?
That's, that's a dock grant, so that's money that's, we're, we're putting a grant, a docket in really respond.
Yep.
The state, we got a grant to pay for, I think it was seventy-five percent, so we'll spend that money, and then we get reimbursed from the state.
Gotcha.
So that's just money that's out and then back. I think we did put it in, cuz you had mentioned that before, and I forgot, I think you did add it. I had not put it in there, but you, you asked that.
Chris, if we get down to the point where we do, let's say, let's say we don't spread it over two years, are you getting by hiring a thousand dollars at a time to clean it up?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, they, Andy proved basically how much you can do with a, he just had his own skid steer and a regular attachment, and he could, he did a lot. So basically, it's just about being more efficient, like he did, what he did last, before he resigned, would have taken us months to do by hand, I mean, everyone knows that, I mean, obviously, it goes in, it grinds a tree down to, or brush down to nothing, just like that, versus cutting it down, hauling it, all back to burn probably, you can either chip it, which then sometimes you gotta cut it up anyway, cuz it won't go through the chipper, especially like the honeysuckle branches out, where you gotta pile it up and then burn it at some point, so. It's just, a lot of it's just about efficiency, and, you know, we can, like I've, I've done, I've cut the trail from like the beach bridge back to the, back to the dam, with, it took five, my entire crew, four or five guys back in the day, to widen it like four feet, and it took like a week, and that was basically all we did that week, except, you know, having one guy maybe mowing or whatever.
Hey, Chris.
So, you could, you could do that, and, you know, if you keep, close the trail, you, you could have done that in like a day or less probably. Obviously, once you get used to running it and all that.
Yep.
And that's, that's one problem, we look at renting, and it's, you know, six, seven, eight hundred dollars a day for the whole thing, and you also have to learn how to run it.
So that morning, you're pretty slow.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and some of that's an art form too, you know, with getting really fast at that stuff, so there's a lot of inefficiency there too. I was, I'm just looking for a way to, to make those tasks go quicker, and, and even just prairies, like, you know, there's brush and prairies, cedars and prairies that we don't, it's hard to get to it. Just, you go out there and you can roll through some of that, and you can do acres, you know, pretty quick.
You know what, we got everybody in the room too. I think we'll bring up something you and I were talking about. You know, the pickup stuff, where we all order together and see if we can't get better deals, instead of you order a pickup here, I don't know how much different the sheriff's department pickups are, but if they're the same pickup, you know, like Craig got, now, Greg got one, he won't need one for a while now, obviously, but if we.
I mean, if they could do that and get us our police package, I mean, that's where I'd get.
Yeah, that's where you guys, that's why I said I don't know. If we could do something like that, and if it could knock a few bucks off the budget every year, I mean, it's just something we need to look at, I think. You know, I just, I don't wanna interfere with what you guys need special money.
Our problem is getting our police package.
Yeah, well, and that's what I was, that's what I was concerned about, but you know, Paul orders one or two periodically every year.
In general, we bought them local.
Yeah.
Because that's how passports have wanted us to do it, that's the cheapest way I know of to get at least Ford, I don't know, Steiber is the only place, as far as I know, what they tell me, you can get the state bid. So, I, this is the first year I've, I actually went with the state bid, because it's obviously down in Des Moines, or West Des Moines, or wherever they're at down there, so it's not going to be a local purchase.
We're seeing evolve, but like I said, we buy them local, according to the CEO of Ford, that may not even be an option.
Right, I couldn't even get one here in town.
Well, I mean, I, I went to order pickup the other day, and I just, it's, it's just tough to even, you gotta do their packages, so I mean, I get it.
And the state bid, you, you pick the color, and that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, that's way, it's that way for a reason.
What kind of sections, when you get one ordered, they tell you it's coming, and then they stand there, and they get to the end, and then you gotta go past till I cover, cuz they said it'll be here, and it's not there, Paul. I, I'm telling you, it's Ford, but they turn around and, and dropped it, said, you're not gonna get it, it's like, dude, I don't have that much time left for the budget year to get that. Also, I mean, we end up getting a Tahoe on state bid from Carl Schittlach, they also give state bids.
Each company has a different, might have a different dealer.
Let's hope we can get together and talk to these guys and sit down with them.
And just instead of you going out and negotiating the price, and you going out and negotiating the price, so emergency management, let's get together and see if we can.
I mean, that, that's the nice thing about state bids, is if you wanna have one fifty. They have a couple options, but it's pretty much, you have a couple different vehicles to pick from, and that's it.
Yeah, it's just.
You don't get to pick and choose too much.
When Kyle and I were talking about, you know, you kinda know, hey, I need three new patrol cars next year, and I need another, you know, in secondary roads, hey, we need two pickups, cuz we haven't replaced these, you know. So, I mean, if you can pool together six pickups, or, you know, you guys are getting pretty much all pickups if you can, so.
I know that better, you know, the dealership would honor that better and say, hey, here's getting six or seven, ten vehicles, let you say.
Volume speaking.
To be fair, I haven't got my state bid truck yet either, and they thought it would be January, February, and they haven't heard anything about it.
So then, that's not all roses that way either, we had been talking about, so I thought, why, everybody is sitting here, let's get that, everybody thinking in that mindset, to see if that helps. You know, obviously, you guys might have a special, if we can't get it to where your special police packages are involved in that, I mean, hopefully, we could.
Sure check it out, see if they'll set out with them.
All they can say is no.
We don't know, we don't know.
Exactly. So sorry to interrupt that, but when I was thinking about it, I thought, well, I'm gonna spit that out quickly, everybody sitting, they don't have secondary roads here, but we can follow. Okay, so, we're gonna try to split your, your skid loader and your brush cutter up.
We wanna reduce it by, then I guess we're gonna do it fifty thousand, or, or are we gonna do that, or cut it in half on that? I mean, I just wanna know, we gotta know, I guess.
Well, like I said, I don't know their company policies about, I mean, you'd probably know better than I do, like, say if we get the cap, which is what we priced out, I mean, I, I don't know what their policy is, versus, the only equipment I bought lately, and that's been a while, is John Deere, and they, when you pick it up, they need paid in full, that's what it was the last time, I think it was a tractor or a mower.
You know, maybe if you sat down, you know, Paul's got a pretty good rapport with the sales.
Yeah.
So maybe if you sat down with him to talk to these, or at least had him involved in the conversation, maybe that.
And.
Then, we're, cuz we're buying it as Crawford County, we're not just buying it as Chris or Paul, I mean.
As far as I know, the county policy is we can't pay for something that we don't have.
Yeah.
So, like, in a perfect world, you could give them, say you put fifty thousand in for a skid loader in this budget year, you could pay that as like a down payment, and then pay for the rest of the next year, but then as far as I know, that'd be violating your, your policy on that.
Correct.
But I don't know if you could make an exception, you know, or not, that's all, I don't know.
No, no.
That's on you.
Well, then I suppose there's another problem.
Yeah. I just don't know if you can split it like in half.
By magic, we just take the shredder out.
Right. The other thing we haven't addressed is, we have, you have the wages at eight and six percent?
I think, I don't remember, Jody, I had a ten, and I think the rest were five or four, I think. And Jody was hired just because she's been here seventeen years, and just barely over thirty-nine thousand dollars a year.
We were pretty consistent with three percent across the board this year for everybody.
Yep. And I can run it by the board, I mean, at the end of the day, they're gonna set the, set that wage.
Well, that, that, but what we'll do is, we'll, we'll look at your wages, and we'll knock them down to three percent, and then you'll figure out where you're gonna trim elsewhere with your board.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, I can't, I'll pass it along, but then, at the end of the day, it's up to, it's up to them to approve it.
Sure. That's typically what we've done in the past. When the wages were a discrepancy between one and the other, and we have been consistent across the board with that, so I don't think that we're gonna change our, don't seem to be. Lot of heads shaking and not, not, and so.
Well, I, with that, I just, I don't, the twenty-two thousand dollars, we're just gonna cut, I don't see no reason to even just order anything, either order it or don't order it.
Well, we, we, we either, I mean, it isn't like we're not gonna do it, I mean, it's, can we afford it? In the budget. I mean, we were gonna do it over a couple of years, instead of just one.
Yeah, but if you order a skid loader, ninety-eight thousand, so you're only trimming twenty-two thousand dollars off of it. A twenty-two million dollar budget, and I don't, I'm just, it's three of twenty-two thousand, that can help, so.
That's where I'm almost leaning, Chris, and like yours, but with not knowing where we're going with changes next year, of taking it out and seeing what happens, and getting by a year, two years with doing what we're doing.
Get it off completely.
Take the whole skid loader and everything out completely?
Cuz I know what you mean, twenty-two, I mean, you don't do, you had to have a skid loader.
Right, cuz like I said, you'd have to tell me if there's a way to like split it in half, but I don't know that there is.
They're more equally priced, you know, and you can do, but.
I mean, yeah. Only way is look at further bid case versus John Deere.
Right, I'm not saying we wouldn't do that, but for, for the purpose of the budget, I just went, you know, at Mike and them, on the board, I don't know that much about skid loaders. He's had both, like Bobcat and Cap, and he recommended going with Cap, so that's why I priced them out. I'm, I'm not saying there wouldn't be a different, cheaper option, I don't know how Cap pricing is versus Bobcat, the discounts are all similar, you know, twenty-seven percent off, thirty percent off of MSRP basically on your machines, I don't know if, like Bobcat, maybe they take twenty-seven percent off the attachments, but I don't know if anyone does that, or if it's all just the machine.
Don't know. Okay, well. So in this one sixty-five, though, there's a pickup and the Bobcat, or the skid loader.
It's a skid steer with the attachments, a hundred and twenty, and the, a state bid F-one-fifty, I sort of had to guess on what one's gonna be, similar to what we just got. Like, the, the four-door version that we're supposedly getting this year is forty-two thousand, which doesn't include, you know, we gotta switch radios over, lights over, things like that, so I, I'm like, I have no idea what a truck's gonna cost next year, so I put in forty-five, and basically, hope it doesn't go up, you know, thousands of dollars like it did this year.
What's that?
Probably better up to fifty dollars.
I'm gonna say, yeah.
I mean, it went up, when I got a bid from, or quote from Team Ford last fall for the budget, it was like, the truck was like thirty-seven, and then when I repriced it before I did the state bid, it had went up to, well, you couldn't even get one, but it was gonna be forty-four, if I couldn't get fleet price. So it went up, you know, seven thousand dollars in less than a year.
Yeah.
So, I would say just decrease that by about a hundred and ten thousand. With fifty-five thousand in there for the new vehicle.
Fifty-five for the vehicle?
Yep.
I would like to make sure that we got future plans, or you'll have vehicles pretty much up to par then?
I mean, it's a, we have a lot of, well, I don't know if it's a lot by county standards, but I'd be replacing the one at Yellow Smoke this year, just cuz it's, it's just falling apart.
Yep, I get it.
And then Nelson Park was next, Kelly's vehicle, I think, is a twenty-eleven, my vehicle's a twenty-twelve, like my vehicle has a hundred and fifteen thousand or something on it. So, pretty much, most years, you have to replace some type of vehicle or equipment to try and stay on schedule. Um, my, and that includes mower, mowers is, like the tractor, we kept our last tractor for twenty-eight years. You know, that we replaced several years back, so some of the equipment can last a lot longer, mowers and, mowers and trucks tend to.
What, what, I mean, obviously, we could probably do like you were suggesting, if you just, there are trails you had to have something done, you'd kinda.
Right, yeah, I'm not saying we can't.
But like, what if we have a, a line item in here where we're starting to save for this skid loader, you know, and then on what?
Start saving with taxpayers' dollars, so then you're taxing people for services not received, that's called fund balances.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, we're just putting something, I don't know, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to throw some darts at the wall here. To get you, I, I mean, I, I see the value in the skid loader, cuz obviously, if it's got a bucket too, you can, for more than just brush cut.
Right, it's, it's for more than just brush cut, and I mean, I, obviously, we have a tractor that can do a lot of too.
You see my, yeah, that's what, that's all I was looking at, just trying to spit the ball out of.
Yep, yep, and I, like I said, when I proposed it, I know it was a, it's a big expenditure, but when you don't have one, and nothing to trade in, I mean, there's really, if you ever want one, there's gonna be a big expenditure at some point.
Maybe you catch a year where you're good on trucks, you're good on mowers, and they all of a sudden, you don't have that fifty, sixty thousand in those things.
Yep, and then you, then you can move on it, yeah, maybe that's what we look at, you kinda look at your, you know, like with secondary roads, he's got his five-year plan, you know, I mean, I know that's hard to do, cuz you don't know what water line's gonna break out in the campground or anything, but maybe if you have a five-year plan, and hey, look, I will have this year where I don't have any pickups, and we can work on it.
And that might happen, cuz we, we doubled up on a mower a few years ago, so once, we actually have a mower sitting at the Dow House for when one, the older one blows up, so we won't actually need a, we'll just go back to having two mowers down there, so, so we have tried to plan some of that in advance.
Seems like we always tell you know a lot, Chris, so I'm just trying to figure out ways to make it work.
Yeah, I get it.
So if we subtract a hundred and ten from that, and then you get the pickup that you need this year. Okay.
Work on them salaries.
And then work on them salary. And you gotta know what that number is versus what you got. Like, like we said, three is what we're kinda running the gambit at.
Yeah, I assumed it would be something like that, I guess the only thing I would say is, I don't, Jody's pretty well underpaid, so I could see there being an issue there, just if I were, so, just, just fair warning on that, so.
You got your board, I mean.
We have to develop a plan, we bring her in.
Yeah, let's just see if there's a development, develop a plan, like you said.
It'd be good to kinda get the job description, which is what we're working on too, so there's a good understanding of what the responsibilities are, are in.
Yeah, I mean, she, she does a lot, she volunteers a lot, she does, I know she does a lot, it'd be very hard to survive without her, I know that for a fact.
Good.
Okay.
I think.
I do.
Okay, next on the Sheriff Department? Yeah, Chuck? Yeah, please, Chuck, come up here, and we'll hit that worksheet quick.
Chris, please pass that out, have you heard of any Nelson Park?
Uh, I'm waiting for the, I mean, I don't know, I assume until that water's out.
Right.
We tested the water, and I've been waiting for the test results, so they want fresh test results before they'll try and give me any filtration type ideas.
Okay.
So, I thought they, apparently they meant ten business days, so hopefully this. So I thought they, apparently they meant ten business days, so hopefully this week we'll get the results and I can send them to the filtration company.
Okay. Now, this is, this is the rural basic. This is showing us our, what our rural basic.
Put, put that little worksheet together, that's how it's, what affects the rural basic. Hope you take the top number there, where the taxes will have been, that I can't see right now, three million something.
Three million, six hundred thirty-seven dollars and six hundred nine. Thirty-six, thirty-seven.
That's a maximum of three ninety-five. Body request, what we have so far is transfer secondary roads, that's full maximum, two million seven sixty-five. Transfer to rural supplemental, that just kind of works along with the rural basic. So limestone, secondary road, hundred fifty thousand, I guess you guys can see them all. And I thought we could put some adjustments in that middle column there, suggestion. But if we don't do something, it'd be taking probably eighty thousand dollars out of the rural basic. And the suggestions, I kind of put over on the right-hand side, I was starting to put it down, it didn't mean, it didn't mean the print, but. Maybe something to consider, yeah.
So what? So what, what we see here is we're looking at, uh, at Chuck. Potential, I mean, obviously the sheriff's department is mostly taking care of that one deputy and the, and that.
And two vehicles.
And two vehicles, okay. So if there was any, like, move fifty percent of that out of the general basic. That was a suggestion. Okay, and I mean, the limestone, obviously a year like this has demonstrated that, is that really something we wanna cut? I mean, hell, it would be something we wanted to add to if we could afford it, but I certainly don't know that we wanna cut that. Um, roadside, maybe we tell Paul, you know what, don't buy new seed this year, or, you know, figure it out, dip, something different. I mean, maybe we can't afford as many roadside helpers, I don't know. I mean, it's something we, it'd be nice if he was able to be here today, so we could figure that out a little bit. Then the transfer for the flood and erosion.
They don't need the money transferred yet.
So you wouldn't have to tax.
Yeah, no new taxes on that.
So if you did, if you did the fifty percent and now I'm transferring that, you're back up to close to a hundred grand again. We're not taken out of rural crap.
The only other thing that means we, Chris's cut was all in general. We can pull one of your vehicles out of rural and shove it back into general, which would keep our rural a lot healthier. That's the whole reason why we started this process was our.
Yeah, I mean.
Seeing how our rural funds were.
Aren't you essentially doing that anyways, Kyle? If you take it, the sheriff's a hundred and sixty-five thousand and cut it in half, you're.
Yeah.
Cut the car out of that and then take it and put it in the general.
Part of the wages.
Part of the wages out of general anyways.
Or you can take, or, or you can do both vehicles out there, cause that's, we're roughly speaking seventy thousand. So that could move over and have the two vehicles come out of general.
However, you wanna skin that cat.
Well, if I don't, as an auditor standpoint, I think that might be maybe simpler than trying to split wages from.
So that's seventy.
Seventy, Chuck.
Yeah, so that would give us an additional ninety thousand, and then there's, that'd keep that balance a lot healthier, wouldn't it?
Are we seventy-nine, just eighty in the hole at this point, Chuck?
You would be if you follow this.
If we follow what we're at right now. So basically, we've almost, well, we've, we, we went a little bit over. What we would be in debt. Cause Jim's seventy would leave us at nine, and the twenty-two, then we're at fif- then just say fifteen over. Fifteen to the good, but we're still only fifteen to the good, and that's a long ways from.
The solid waste, I mean, that's, that's, that's the business, that's my commentary, we can't change that.
Yeah, that's.
Libraries by State Staff.
So basically, the only place to clean up is either, and we really don't wanna cut limestone. I mean, cause it's even more expensive, so we're not even able to buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth that we bought this year. And let's face it, them roads never, can never get enough of that. So based, the roadside's. Only place left to do some cleanup.
It's like a weed, weed commission.
I'm gonna say, you know, and we, you know, we got a new one, we had to pay for training, that's, but that's on this year's budget. So that won't be on next year's. So yeah, that's seventeen. We're really kinda maxed at that one. That's kind of like solid waste, you know, it's almost, there's no room to maneuver. So the roadside, and Paul, Paul's pretty good at pointing out that, you know, roadside in a lot of counties just don't even do that. But I, I, you know, I think we get a lot of weed control benefit, plus, you know, it's erosion control benefit. But maybe this year we, God, what did he spend on wood, just seed loan this last year? It's nuts.
And you're not required to transfer a hundred percent to secondary roads either. I think the minimum requirement is seventy-five.
Okay.
FYI.
Seventy-five percent.
Now, if you look at your Iowa County Magazine, it specifically talks about taxes. The county must transfer at least seventy-five percent of the allowable maximum to receive its full state road use tax fund allocation. I mean, I'm not suggesting you do that, but even a small amount of that would make a little bit of difference.
You know, other than what we did with.
I think we had a good start, though. We moved the seventy into general for the two vehicles.
What do we do to help that?
Seventy, twenty-two, five. So we got ninety-two, five hundred. Okay, and then we kind of need to visit with Paul on the roadside, right?
Yeah, the actors. Roadside, yeah.
And we're gonna.
So do you guys want me to go do that and give her another sheet for you guys, so that you know where it's at?
Okay.
Did we knew, was there anything else we needed from the sheriffs?
Right, until we know any wage increases from that contract, and if they don't sign a contract, then, uh.
Oh, yeah.
You can just set their wage.
Kind of kind of deal.
I mean, that's such an area, that's what we can't control, but we don't really.
We don't know what the union's gonna do, I don't know anyway.
Unless you just don't wanna get two cars instead of one, I mean, however your situation is on vehicles, so.
What's happening?
Well, I just, I gotta ask.
We always ask. I mean, if you wanna neckle nine, you go back to the vehicle, we'd have to increase the automatic gas, that's always your oil changes. I mean, they're running, they're running hard for the five years, five or six. We're trying to extend.
I guess I should, I'm more clear about that, your locations for two of those years.
Right, the next budget year, you know, I'm hoping buying down here, so it's a, be a little cheaper for me.
How many cars are in the fleet?
We have eleven campers spare, and that, the spares used by the jailers to go to jail by our guys, so if they're. If one of the vehicles needs to be taken home, because theirs is hit a deer or something. I'm not out of vehicle, don't have to transfer over, they'd get taken to spare you at home. And I just sold the Jeep to Cherokee, which Kyle helped me on. And what they did, gave me a check made out to both of us, so when I go down to Carl's and we'll sign it over, they'll sign their part, and they take that right off the top line. That way it's not a budget item. So, other than waiting for it to get in, I've been waiting for a long time, so hopefully the next week. So I did that, and then I got one coming for Kyle's.
Jim, I wrote on a note, I had written down forty thousand for a shed for cars under investigation.
We was wondering if, at the end, whatever we came to, that, that's why I didn't put it in.
Yeah, I, I had known, I jumped.
We'd like to get a, a shed built out there, and I mean, I, I don't really like doing everything myself, like Roger and I helped build that. The, whatever I would say, the training facility for dog, because I think it means more when people donate money and say, hey. You're willing to put the work in, we're gonna give you some money for it, same way with the boat building.
But the forty thousand in, isn't in this current, but I just mentioned that.
I just mentioned that, cause we had a vehicle that went in under investigation, got put into a shed, which really. I'm saying isn't a hundred percent secure, it needs to be. If we got a murder or something, thing, and we pull in a vehicle, and we need to lock that down tight. And only we have the keys to it. I like building out in our landfill. I got the area, right where we put the impound lot. So, but again, you have to look at, see where you're at. If you ain't got money, you don't have money for that. That's what I'm saying. Like a special comeback, or maybe talk next year, see where you're at.
A combo, you know, a secured fence with razor or barbed wire on top of it.
Well, a lot of times you're putting vehicles in, cause you got fingerprints. Okay, so that's why they're going inside. It really isn't, if we can put them in a barbed wire, we'd be good, cause nobody's gonna, shouldn't cross it. But my, my whole point is if you got blood, or if you got fingerprints on it, if it rains, it's gonna worse step off, guys. I think a secured building, we don't need heat in there, okay? Floor in a building to go up with the lights. Just a, yeah, just basically a shed.
Contract law enforcement, you budget fifty-five, but like last, current activity seventeen.
Oh, it might be going up a little bit on that, just so you guys all know that Charter Oak has contacted me and would like to cut the hours of patrol. So we're looking at another possibly, and I'm just saying, I haven't sat down with them yet. Looking at it possibly seven, and Dow City's willing to give us a couple more. Thousand that I haven't put on a revenue, because.
Cause they're paying, covering that cost.
Right, right, right. So that, I mean, that should help with wages too, I mean. We'll see. I haven't sat down with it yet. Charter Oak wants to meet with me. Okay? I'm trying.
Appreciate that.
That it, guys?
I think that, you got anything else, Dave? We're good, thanks, guys. Appreciate you coming up. We'll be at that. My jokes are just dying. Okay. Public health, I think you were next on the little list. Thank you, much appreciated. All right. All right. Craig, did you have some in particulars? Jean, did you have some particulars that you'd already earmarked in here?
Well, uh, you know, the one thing that we did about is the, uh, increase of the wages, which is kind of where we're starting with everybody. As you know, we're keeping everybody at the three percent, and you guys are recommending five, so we'd like to make sure that. Everybody's on the same playing field, and that would be three percent for the wages. That's the one, one thing we wanted to key in on. So that would help the budget. I think that was my name, thing to make sure we got that on the right.
Yours is a little harder, cause you got the in and outs.
Since I'm the new one, maybe you can explain, but like, when you, when we're doing this for twenty-three, twenty-four. And you're projecting what your income is gonna be, what happens if you're over that amount or under that? What do you do? What do you do if you're over, if you get in more revenue than what you suspect? What, what happens then to that added revenue?
It'd, it would go, it would reduce the tax.
Reduce the tax asking for the next year?
No, for that current, for the year that comes in. So like, if we get, right now, we're running about eighty percent. We're a little bit ahead of, of what we should be for the year. So like, let's say we end up the year, there's a million two budget, we get a million three, and that hundred thousand would be that much less tax asking. We don't have a retained earnings.
Right, right.
So then it dumps back in.
It stays in the general.
That's why you see that seven million grow, or five million grow to six, six, seven.
It never left the general fund.
And it's very hard to guess that.
Well, you don't know what your patient one's gonna be, and we get grants throughout the year, and we're not expecting. You know, and then what happens if you get, for instance, the IT grant of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You make the expenditures in June, you don't get the revenue until next year, you know, next six, four years, maybe sixty, ninety days out. So you don't have expenditure with the revenue, so that's gonna be patient tax asking. It truly is kind of crafty, but, but what I try to do is do a five-year rolling average of each mechanic set up. You know, and then look at, say, okay, yeah, that makes sense, yeah, that really makes sense.
I also think that one of the things we talked about was, you know, the tax asking last year was like six hundred thousand dollars. And that, that just seems to leave so much leeway, cause if it's in the budget, you can spend it, and so we really wanted to kind of discuss that a little bit.
I mean, since I've been here, we've never done that.
That is not.
In fact, this year, you know, like we talked at our board meeting last week, we're, we should have a very good year. And not use probably half of our tax asking, because we've had a lot of empty positions.
How are you doing it, keeping up your workload with those empty positions? I mean, is that something we probably can actually clean up that way?
Everybody is at max capacity for, for doing things, so. Everybody is at max capacity for, for doing things. So there is no, no new stuff. Um, on, on the, you know, home health side of things. It's kind of self-limiting because you can't take, you can't take referrals if you don't have the staff to, to handle safely. So it, it's not that we're not taking referrals. We don't think we, I think we turned down a couple and it's only because they want safe to be at home to begin with. So.
But you are kind of keeping up with your referrals.
Yeah, we're, we're keeping up.
But you're right there where if you had a bunch more, you'd be in trouble.
Right, we would have to decline.
And we're running into where that, that, that supervisor, she doesn't give me that off. She's on call every weekend. So you did bring on two.
Unofficially, yes, um, we have two. We're still in the hiring background check process with them, but I think the two of them will be, will be filled.
And I think in our budget, they're actually in those organs because that's what we wanted, but we can't find anyone our, our wage. So there you are.
Has it been harder to get some of the grants that you typically are able to get or some of the? Funding through ECI or whatever that helps offset?
No, we're, I mean, we still have all of the ECI grants. Um, we're just covering a little different service area with, with the new, new stuff. But still have all the ECI grants, got the childless grant and family planning grant. Um, so we're maintaining and then, you know, the IT grant that came as an extra and, and you know.
Got extended. Opioid tax, so like honey, how you guys could possibly use that?
I don't think that we would really have any need for it. I think, um, even as far as that dollars goes, the EMS and animal enforcement's probably been hit the hardest with.
In the case of the mental health.
Um, yeah, I mean, oh, absolutely.
And we are supposed to be meeting about.
And I don't know about, you know, treatment, treatment options, um, you know, like.
Because that's not, yeah, we just want to make sure you had everything we could, we're getting more.
So Lynn, have you seen on your trends on your five year rolling averages that you do as your income been going up that you've been getting?
Yeah, our, our hospice and home health incomes are driven by the cost report. So as our costs go up, our reimbursement rates go up. Now, not dollar for dollar, obviously, but, but they do go up year to year.
So is your percent tax asking been, does that stay relatively the same or is that also started to shrink?
I think it's been in the five to six hundred thousand range for a number of years now. I couldn't tell you how many, do you know Terry on top of it? I think at least as long as I've been here, Craig, we try to keep it fairly close to that amount. Like I said, this year is odd because we have a ton of open positions and, you know, not just a week or so, but months on the.
Well, I would tell you guys for your department that as we're looking at. Valuations that probably won't keep up with the costs. I mean, if there's ways to trim that, we need to be looking for them.
Positively fill in the positions and then secondary road is three full, four, four times as short right now, just because of them though.
Yeah, I mean, and, and we're actually, he's got some that are projected to retire that we're actually thinking hard about not replacing them. I mean, the discussion has been, I should say, and.
Trying to develop, throw like ideas to try to weather the storm. I mean, if it comes down to laying people off or it's a little, that would happen and if we got opportunities to not.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah.
And that's something we always look at when we have somebody leave is, is this something that can be absorbed by somebody else or do we need to fill this? Does, does it need to be filled as a full time? Does it? Need part time?
And you can only do that so long.
And then it just costs more when you do find that.
But you do get to the point where, like I said, everybody's at max capacity. So if somebody, and, and if, if we had another pandemic tomorrow. We would just, there, there would be no way that we could, could respond like we did with, with COVID. Um, just because we're down the staff members and everybody is already full. And if I pull people to, to do other things, then the things that they're supposed to be doing aren't gonna get done. So then you're not meeting requirements for funders and then they get upset with you and I mean, it's just a.
So you just added the alcohol from part time to full time?
Deb has been working, yeah, Deb has been working right at thirty, thirty-two-ish hours a week. Um, and she works in our grant program. So that's not enough.
Yeah, her, her position will probably be ninety percent covered.
We saw that that raise was six dollars an hour. I wonder what was driving that?
Six dollars.
Looking thirty-one to.
No, thirty-seven and a half. But I just said, we don't have a nurse that makes thirty-seven.
What? Would you do salary?
I think it's four and a half actually, because we just started with the number.
We've been doing.
Nobody.
I know it, it's, it'll make roughly twenty thousand dollars difference per, per sale.
So that'll keep everything.
Per point?
Per point.
So. Twenty, thirty thousand.
I mean, a point and a half, a point and a half would be thirty grand roughly. I, I don't know the exact number.
Now, since I just went and said that I did not read the warning for lines, so that was. I think that was pretty much, because by the way that you have revenue, one of the questions I had is the revenue staying up even though you only have, you just have one hospice nurse right here?
Well, the reason it's staying up is because we had two really good months, first part of the year. We've seen it drop off now. We were running about a hundred thirty thousand a month. Now it's about eighty thousand a month. Next month, there's probably be about thirty thousand.
Sure, one person.
It's good at that. Revenue is good, but that means you have a lot of people in hospitals, just like the hospital.
Well, traditionally we do see bigger numbers beginning of the year because when you spend down the grants, then that revenue comes the following year. So.
Yes, we have it at like thirty dollars.
Yeah.
And then that went down to that and I did not read in between.
No, no worries, no worries.
Hope anybody else see anything catches their attention?
Well, just, you know, just laying just.
Wages?
You know, and I think this board. We really need to start looking towards the future of where any of that these evaluations that continue to go down. The toilet, how are we gonna make a smarter, leaner public health? How can your valuations go down too much? I mean, like my house in Carroll County, when it almost fifty percent.
There, the state's.
Evaluation, evaluation. So like your residential.
For the taxes going out in August, we don't. Firstly, talk to our legislators. They're changing our, how our.
Right, but I mean, you're talking about lower valuations and, and I have a case in point, I just got my valuation.
Your valuation will stay the same, but what we get for taxable dollars coming in will roll back. So instead of having it at eighty or, or a hundred percent or what, it might roll back to ninety or eighty, twenty percent less of what.
Evaluation without your piece.
We'll never be able to charge more than a hundred and two point five percent of last year's. So basically a two and a half percent cap for us.
So then. Carroll County must have an inaccurate information on their.
Well, now that, that's, that's the bill that's going through now. It ain't there.
Because my, my taxes usually ran around thirteen hundred. Now they're gonna be almost twenty-one hundred. So there's probably a calculation errors when I'm catching for the U then.
This hasn't passed yet. This is coming out of funnels and this is.
It looks like it's gonna make it. That's why we're preparing for it.
But yeah, I mean, we can, we can.
We're watching Kyle.
We wanna make you guys aware of that. I mean, you've got a position, I mean, you guys are saying you're, you're maxed out. I mean, you know, I guess as. As an employer, you want your employees to be, I would say within ninety percent of maxed out, you know, of work. You don't want to sit around.
You know, we get the idea that like if we have a pandemic.
Point where you got some flexibility too. I think just as long as everybody's on the same page, we gotta continue to.
We will.
Be leaner, smarter.
Yes, absolutely.
What we're being forced to do by the state.
Here, here's the one thing, as far as your pandemic thing, I want to bring this point up to help, I think, basically help offset what Kyle's saying. If we have a national emergency, we can actually tax them for that. And get us through that. And I mean, yeah, if you don't have the nurses on staff in this world, it's hard to go get them. I mean, like they're sitting there waiting to do something.
We're, we're been freed down for.
Most of this year, most of this fiscal year.
I think since August.
That is the biggest thing, we just trying to avoid that cliff. You know, if we all of a sudden have a million dollars less than our revenue next year or five hundred or so on and so on. We don't want to get to the point where we have to make drastic cuts.
No, I, I get it.
But are those three empty positions then in this budget or?
When I put the budget together, you have to, you have to assume you're gonna have every position full every day. I mean, otherwise we wouldn't have enough spending authority to do that. Now, reality is you, you have people come and go throughout the year, but I'm not a, I'm just saying HR person, I don't know. What the percentage, you know, Terry's office, you don't have much turnover.
They got a great boss.
But I mean, yeah. I just, I know, I understand that, you know.
If you're functioning without those three, if you just move forward and say we're not. Gonna put those three in the budget.
Right, we. We are at the point where if we don't replace them, we're gonna have to stop providing services because we've got three, three nurses that are on call. Beth is on call almost, she's on call two weekends a month and probably three nights a week.
Is, is part of your trouble getting them? Is it financial? I mean.
No, it's, I, I think part of it is, is.
Just a lack of nurses?
If, I think it's just lack of nurses, number one. There's so many different things that you can do as a nurse now. Um, that, that weren't available, um, you know, five years ago. I mean, you look at like all of the MCOs. Um, they hire nurses to do case management. Gosh, they can work from home.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
No nights, no weekends, no call, no holidays, and they can still make the wages that they were making working those crazy hours. So it's not just healthcare competition. It's. And it's not local. I mean, you, you can work for a company in New York if you want to. And, and so I, I think that that's part of it.
When you never, you never have a conversation with nurses where they're not talking about how much money traveling nurses.
Yeah, yeah.
Six hundred dollars a day?
They can make doctor money.
You wanna talk about pissing off your nurses, your regulars and your doctors like Manny? We were talking about, all of a sudden you have a traveling nurse come through and they're making the doctor's salary and everybody's upset. But yet they know they need them.
But and that, and that's the balancing act that you have when you're bringing new people on that are asking for. The, the pie in the sky because that's what they're making doing stuff out there. But then you have your staff that's been on staff for, you know, fifteen years or longer. And it's like you. You bring new people in too high, they're gonna leave because sure, Matt, well, I, I work for you. We're gonna bring.
I agree.
New girl on, but it just, it's.
And how you just automatically just bring them up and the new.
I don't know what happened to all people.
Uh, we don't.
I don't know where people, we're all still here. Population didn't change significantly anyway. Where did all the people go?
We wonder that all the time when restaurants are closing, they don't have anybody to wait tables.
I just, I'm working from home apparently.
Yeah, they like.
There's a lot of benefits available out there that never used to be. I think that there's people that are making do with less. You know, I mean, you think about a young mother, especially a single mother or a single parent, we'll throw it out there that way. I mean, make do with less, you get. Earned income credits and all them other things and what you save on a babysitter, if you can even find a babysitter. You know, I mean, just think about all the things, you know, that people are just working for cash. On jobs. I think there's a lot more of that going on than we realize. I, that's just my guess. I don't have any other guess for it. Do you?
No, they always try and use, use, you know, the benefits that you get as acting as, as an attraction to a job. But younger people that are, younger people don't care about retirement. No, they don't. So you can't use, you know, diapers to be a big. Oh, you get diapers. But now they don't care. They don't.
But yet the youngsters do not care about what they could buy four years ago. You know, when. I don't. My dad could work one job and life could stay at home. And still buy a home and a car.
So do you guys see any partnerships that are forming like with colleges and.
Yep.
Hospitals or in medical facilities that, you know, they're paying for part of their education to get started? You know, as they start as a freshman and I want to be a nurse, hey, Crawford County Health has this program and we'll pay.
Yep, there, there, there's a lot of that tuition forgiveness or tuition.
You can do that with like Jessica, work out something with her where she can actually bring people to you.
Well, and we've, we've rekindled our partnership with, with, um, we had three, um, they were observations, so just shadowing. And then actually, um, we had a RN BSN, um, student come in and preceptor. So really trying to seek that out. Um, we actually had a. Um, intern from ISU come in too.
Okay.
And so hoping, I really wanted to hire her too. Oh my God, she was so wonderful. But, um, her family lives on the other side of the state, so.
But there are opportunities that we might have in there.
And, you know, job corps.
I don't know.
Uh, yes, they have. I don't know if it's a CNA or it's a medical assistance program. It used to be, Eve. I, I don't know with all the changes.
We've been running a program at MRCH in Manning where we're bringing a junior high teacher like him, Manny. Just to give him a day.
Well, and we, we also have the, we're fifth grade, the, the business partners, the fifth grade business partner, um, thing with the school. And we have Jody Holbauer's class. And so we partner with them every year and they come to our office and we go there and, and we just went last weekend and CPR with them. And so just trying, I mean, everybody's trying things, but the nursing shortage isn't something that happened overnight. It's been brewing since, you know, the nineties and. They're twenty, well, that, is that gonna work?
Yes, I, I got it put on the agenda. We just need to know what time.
Are we gonna talk with Colin too? He wasn't listening on this. So I can't be funny today, but you sure are doing a good job. Okay. And, and you know, I, I, I'm not trying to create more work for you, Ken, but if you guys had some kind of a five year plan too.
Oh, yeah, we're working on that. That's part of that strategic planning that we started doing, just trying to identify what our program priorities are and where we need to funnel our energies into.
And it helps, it helps us establish, you know, things that are, that are, you know, leave this alone, they've got to have it. These are things that we can clean up if we have to. You know, I mean, we're, we're trying to do our best for the folks that are financing us. We, if we get taxes down, maybe a few more will show up in the county and we'll have a little more money.
Thirteen thousand, I think, roughly.
Too much?
Oh, we were working on the grant today.
Well, we were working on the grant today and it's just kind of one of those things where we write elder bridge, elder bridge grants to help fund services. And then we have to have a match and then we have the administrative costs over, you know, over top of that. Um, maybe it would be better to not write the grant, not, not give elder bridge money, us not write the grant, them not have to deal with us and just. Give the money for the, for that same purpose.
What did you grant for?
Um, one was twenty-four and one's.
Yeah, we never get the full amount.
We never.
One seventeen and the other one is about, what was it, twenty-one thousand?
So we were gonna increase our ask this year to help.
You know, it's not, it's not dollar for dollar, but it's not that far apart either.
Just food for thought. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of.
I know. Well, you guys have talked about crossing services and, you know, where that all happens and how to eliminate it and. Yeah, they're giving us money to give you money to give them money. You know, it's like, hey, hold the phone. What if we all kept our own money and.
Well, yeah, I mean, does it make sense?
No. And it's a lot of administrative costs and it's a lot of others.
But I have a feeling I get federal funds to work here.
Oh, I'm sure, because we get a lot of services. Oh, I'm sure, because we get a lot of services for our little thirteen thousand dollars. A lot of services, so.
Yeah, the only time in your life ever, unless you were a little bit older. Because then I could retire.
I know. I can see it from.
Five years, eight months, but he's telling.
A lot older.
I, I've, I've been watching, listening to the news. I don't know that all of them will afford to retire. I'm going to work until someday they said, Ty, you're dead. Oh, I didn't notice.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you for coming. Really appreciate it. That was easy.
No, this is a highlighted one.
I, I, I pointed that out to him.
Oh, okay.
Maybe that's a.
I talked to the court attorney yesterday.
What was that? What, what's that all about money?
No.
No?
Um, did we ever find out about our procurement policy?
I noticed he was not near his vocal at the last.
Find out about what?
Can we, can we just, can I take the carpet out of the basement?
I thought Colin was finding that out.
Well, I didn't know who he was going to report it to. His glasses are still here.
Did he take off?
Did he want to talk to us about something?
He's on our budget. He's one of them that we have.
I didn't think he was on.
No, he's not on.
He's not on our.
That's why I kept looking over at him. I'm thinking.
I, I didn't.
Am I supposed to know something?
Well, I suppose we find it out about the procurement and how we can continue to get the stuff out of that. I went over and talked to him about, uh, if we're going to have an ordinance, if we're going to do the intervening and, uh, that's what it was.
Oh, really?
He's looking after it. They left, they straight went over there. And they left there, they went.
The one that orchestrated the, he'd bring the sheriff in at this forty and he'd bring us in at twenty, so.
Oh, I know. He orchestrated that second meeting of the compensation board. I know he did.
Well, Chuck and I were talking, like you guys were talking about with public health there.
Yeah.
Well, we're, 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 we were scheming over there.
Even on the rural basics?
Yeah, we were working on getting the rural basics to a number that would be powerful. Okay? You guys want your worksheets I gave you last couple of weeks? I'm updated, so I'll send you.
Who, they're updated?
Yeah, I think it would be, Chuck, you know.
Oh, I thought you had them printed, Chuck, sorry. You do?
Well, maybe you just will pass them out. No sense wasting.
Michelle had it from you again? Oh, that's Chuck's stuff. That's not Colin's classes.
Or maybe you know it, but I don't think so.
He pointed out, I just hundred and fifty thousand for secondary limestone. He said, we can pull that down to a hundred thousand.
It's pretty common.
It said, don't matter where it comes from, the fifty thousand, we can always get that later on. It's just going to pull it out.
Oh.
Pull it out. He even suggested maybe even moving everything to the sheriff's department right into the general fund. He says, that's how it used to be done. He said, in the general fund can stand it. We have a lot of fund balances to cover that. That'll get our rural basic fund balance at a level that's comfortable and move forward. Because what we did there with sheriff's department moving that, we're not even.
So, just, just for my own, you know, but if it goes to rural basic, that means that none of the incorporated areas are taxed that levy.
Right, right.
So even though the sheriff's department is going to the Kyrens, the Lloyds, Manellas.
We're charging for some of them.
We charge for those, a fee to those.
They tax for it and they pay us.
Yeah, we were just showing that. So did, so did the manager.
Contract with us.
Well, you know, I talked to Corey just yesterday.
So we're going to be Shelby County before we notice that.
And they, they get, the fee is based on.
Like Dumb City gets charged, South City gets charged.
Where they come up with what their mouth is.
Um, I don't know. She already does it. I don't know how it does it.
And based on that, they kind of contract, we'll come, we'll come by here five times a day or three times on the weekend.
Well, and some of their contracts include ordinance type things and whatever, that kind of stuff.
Pass them around. Get it, like, fast.
One you, one.
You got one left? All right. You left the Terry.
I got room for you at the table, Chuck.
So was it?
Come on.
Would that do?
Both parts.
Both parts?
Both ways.
On both sides.
They weren't happy when we weren't happy. Or, anyway.
For the.
I got you. I'm not going to pull it out from underneath you. I'm not going to pour you. So you don't, oh, I wouldn't do that to you, Chuck.
That'd be mean.
Tangled webs, really?
What? The two resignations? Yeah.
Of course you would know because you're getting inside Scoopy there. I just didn't know anybody else.
She's got her own source.
Oh, that's true.
I do.
If they're communicating.
So we assume if we like each other. Both of them are still alive. We assume they like each other at least that much.
Yeah, but he has a lump on his head once. That's why it's nice to hire people that are vested in our community. And I know that's hard because you don't always have those qualified positions, but was Evan qualified when he took the job?
No, and that's been a big discussion we've been having.
I know.
Well, you know, and when you got to train them, it takes.
It takes time.
It, it even, Evan will even admit that it took half of his tenure to get to where he was really capable of being a director.
He was a graphic designer, right?
He takes, it just takes time. But I'd rather take somebody eager and willing to work and get to that point than somebody who's qualified and lazy. I know.
And that's why we're kind of doing the thing where, that's why I like your suggestion, Gene, and I will, I will take that.
It's kind of a thought, um.
I mean, maybe advise us the time we need to get Mariah. I don't know if Shani's got that. She is such an introvert. I don't know if she'll ever be able to, she's very sharp. She knocked it out of the park with her interview, really. I mean, other than just the director.
Very well.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, she, she was prepared. However, I, I think knowing Mariah better, she's got the more of the extrovert. Sorry, we're on.
And they could come and spend three years and not make any progress because they just, you know, and there's no, you can't make them move here and give them a six-month trial period and that doesn't work yet, you know, it's just a.
Well, our last conversation last week was that if we, uh, what happens if we just keep working these guys, send them to training, help bring them in? But then the board, we've got some great people on that board.
You do.
I mean, Steph is, she can knock it out of the park. She'd be great in that capacity, but we couldn't afford her. You know, and, and there's, you know, Jay's very sharp. I mean, the whole crew, I mean, Clay, wow. But, so what, what if we just help in the interim while we're, so this is, that was our most recent discussion. We're trying to figure out ways to do this physically, right?
Item twenty-eight on the agenda.
Oh, on the city thing?
That's a work.
Actually thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's get back to our budget.
I don't like that.
It's all right.
Well, it was kind of about our budget. Try to figure out how to save money.
Why we got Chuck?
Yeah, Chuck, please. I just go through these forms. Thank you for understanding. Yep. The by ten was here.
That's a lot.
To adjust off the rural basic fund, I'm just getting down and I was talking to Kyle, it needs to be more than this.
But, uh, you decide where to have the sheriff taken out of, that would help a lot. And then working with Kyle would be the only other thing we could do.
Well, it wouldn't be the end of the world to move all, all of the sheriff over to general.
No, that's what Kyle has talked about too.
I wouldn't be opposed to that.
We've been there before.
So what, what provokes moving him back and forth?
The fund balances.
So that's our fund balance.
Rural people feel different than urban people, so.
At six thirty of twenty twenty-three, our fund balance for the reestimate is six million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand. How much of that, how much of that's our?
Forms real quick so anybody knows.
Okay, right.
So we got that, that one I did and then that's right on the backside of it. You understand that one, that's compared by year. And then the next one is really cool because we've got the fund balances of all the different funds and expenditures. And you take the backside of that. As years on here. And the other one is just a little history on.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah, I did the first one.
Hi, I was like.
This was, this is the life of Chuck. Started in six thirty or eighty.
It's when I graduated high school.
Anyway, just history there, trying to understand them. And you weren't very far behind me, were you? And the other one is just, uh, that's beautiful too. That's my department. That's one of Terry's, that she liked. So I know it takes some looking at, but, uh, it's really you guys' budget. I mean, I don't, I don't know where you would like to end up with, uh, fund balances. You want to get back to the fund balance one?
Well, nineteen eighty-five was the first time I drew out a real supplement.
Some kind of aren't entered, yeah.
I know.
Uh, anyway, the fund balancing, I can use some help on that. On what? Fund balance one? Yeah, okay. Next, that's million five sixty-seven ninety-three down there.
Yep, that's.
Uh, you got in, remember, three hundred, I think it's three hundred fifty-five, three hundred fifteen thousand was from, uh, COVID money. That definitely helped our balance.
Yep.
If you look at the history there on twenty-one and twenty-two, and back to twenty twenty.
Oh, yeah, that's when it happened.
Yeah, which helped financially. But that's one reason our balance did get high. And then if you go on down, we're at sixty-seven, two thirty-seven to the negative, if you go by history, we wouldn't take near that much out. Just missing that bit. And you can see why, someone like you just talked about, he was talking about having three hundred thousand less for tax asking. We didn't know that when we did the budget, so.
All right.
That was a good thing, I guess. But I don't know where, where would you like to uh, have that rural basic, rural supplemental, is that forty-two, three oh nine and sixty-seven, one forty-one? Is that something you're comfortable with?
Well, not really. Might do a bar. Yeah, that's not, well, you know, you, when you look at, like, any kind of an expenditure can gobble that much up awfully fast. And if you look at Paul's fuel costs, I mean, that probably none of that comes out of there, mind you, but that's a general, hasn't that tool and stuff?
Well, that's the secondary road fund.
So, so Chuck, to get to those numbers, the forty-two and sixty-seven, what do you use for a budget number for like public health or the sheriff's department?
Whatever they turn in.
You just give whatever they turned in?
Yes.
Goes from here, goes into Michelle and then Terry. So it's not what's there, okay? I don't change anybody's department.
Okay.
So those need adjusted. They get guidance from you all.
I do the levy rate and the balances and.
That's where I like this. She kind of shows right here which department's pulling out of like rural supplement. Right. You know, and that kind of shows you which department's getting out of which. So if we move that sheriff over to general, that changes that rural balance. And it'll adjust, will sup by just a little bit, because
Yeah.
not much, because some of that's wages.
I mean, historically speaking, I mean, you look back in twenty twenty, there was five hundred and eight thousand in rural basic. Forty-two, so we've been.
Oh, yeah. And then the board has always known that, I think. Kyle, don't you agree?
But I also feel like on the flip side, the six and a half million in your general basic fund is very healthy.
It's very healthy.
Right, even though we're digging into it a little bit, but that still helps. Steve Kinkle said they have a million. Oh, really? How would you like to give big wages and only have a million in your? See, next year when we're doing this and you look at that plus and minus of what ends up being actual.
Right.
It'll be, it'll be a positive number.
Should I think so now?
Probably be around one fifty.
What are you talking?
Guessing.
The plus and minus, it's just on top of it there.
I'm, I'm just talking specifically general basic though. Because these are on budgeted expenditures, assuming everybody's going to spend the, put every penny that they have budgeted for.
And we see this, community health, I mean, they're budgeting for three positions. They don't even have.
Right. I just think that sounds silly.
Without those three people.
Right, so why keep budgeting for them?
What seems scary about that is.
I know, to give back to the county or to keep in the general fund?
That's how they can give whatever raise they want.
That's right, and that, that's where the scary part comes in, because we've learned through history that once it's in the budget.
It happens all the time.
To buy, um.
Do you feel like though public health has recklessly spent that extra money that hasn't been, that's in their budget or they typically give it back?
We have no idea to know if it was reckless.
I mean, if it's wages and, I mean, I don't. You know what I mean? I'm just saying. They're not going out and buying all new desks for everybody with it. They bought a building full of laptop or tablets. They.
That's that board of health.
They bought a phone system.
That doesn't.
That's that.
That doesn't correlate with hours. Right, right, but they only know what they're told.
Space brand kind of, I mean, you know, that's what it appears to me. I don't know that.
They don't sit there for hours on end looking at numbers.
No, they don't.
Then comes.
And I feel like why would I let it be for something that's going to end up in our fund balance anyways?
So let's ask this, should we, we really suggested that more firmly that we don't? I mean, was that the time to do that? Or, you know, because the very first year that we did that, kind of talk about it. Well, let's come into a budget amendment, you know, so you just think.
I mean, because if they, so, so say the tide's turned and they need, they do actually hire those three people. That's just, that ends up being a budget amendment.
Yeah.
And it comes out of fund balances rather than taxing for, but if we leave it, it's getting taxed for, whether they get filled or not, it's getting taxed. But we have the ability to take it out of fund balance because we have the six and a half.
And they won't, they won't spend it on.
Or if you didn't have that in the neck and that, that's where a budget amendment could really be.
Right.
And then they won't spend it on laptops.
Right. I don't know saying they didn't need them. I, I mean, I'm not saying that.
But then that should be on a line item.
So when you do the budget, a budget amendment later, that just comes out of the fund balance. That's.
Yes, it's not, it's not, not taxed for.
And change your levy rate.
Gotcha.
Yeah, a lot of ours are statutory.
Because when they say you order a budget so low, we can't even do our services and that, that.
Right. Yeah, no, I know, but it sounds like they can, because it sounds like they're giving us back four hundred thousand dollars. Out of a how much tax asking? I mean, I'm.
No, I agree with you. I'm just, yeah.
They're giving us three quarters.
And I know it's a crapshoot, but can't we meet in the middle? Can't we meet a third of the way there or, you know what I mean?
You know how much, you know how much? Better I sleep at night if we were doing three hundred thousand dollars for public health as opposed to six hundred thousand dollars?
Well, and then the comment that just this month, can I use that for some improvement to the building that my, you don't think enough, can I use this? I need to do what we want.
Exactly.
And I said, no, but actually, I think this.
Pretty well. Sorry.
I mean, because really, if he, he can easily come back and just do a wage increase of three percent would be a piece of cake because I got three positions that I got in there. That you're funding that I don't have a person to, so I can take those money.
He could reduce those out of there and make it look like.
And I can give them my, whatever percent I want to give. And I would use that money for the.
So when, when the board hears that we have this extra money and they propose bigger wages, the board would of course go along with that.
Yeah, well, we've got the money. Let's, and you hear it when you said on the meeting, we've got the money.
Yeah, so that's kind of the only reason and as we, a couple of years ago saw that we can take that line out and divide it out, just give it to employees and we really can't stop it.
I would assume that the presentation that this board gets isn't the same presentation that the other boards get. You know, I mean, like public health or any of them.
So stay on task, so like with our rural basic, I mean, we're looking at moving a hundred and sixty-four thousand over.
Not, not transferring the twenty-two five.
Not transferring the twenty-two five.
We should still pull, like I said, Chuck, take fifty thousand of that limestone. We could still pull, like I said, Chuck, take fifty thousand of that limestone, secondary roads.
But it is going to look a lot different if we're doing, doing a whole whole amount for.
Well, that would be, that would give us the number you were looking for to begin with, plus a little.
So you wanted to pull fifty thousand for, out of the general for the limestone, I mean, do we wanna cut limestone?
I don't wanna cut it.
We don't wanna cut it, it just was gonna pull fifty thousand or something.
Yeah, whether you cut it or give us our transfers, all gonna be the same.
Yeah, cut the, cut the transfer.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, cause in the years past, when we've been pretty fund balances have been good, we bought, we spent all that two hundred thousand on rock. Right?
Yeah, I remember doing that.
We've done that a couple of times, maybe since I've been on.
If you wanna leave that fifty thousand, then you go all the way, you know, we don't, don't know where it's gonna be for sure, if we wait till the end of June, a transfer might give up a full amount.
Right.
We just don't wanna short ourselves on that hundred fifty.
No, I don't, I don't want to.
No.
Like you said, it don't matter.
Yeah.
I think that's the way we move forward, is hundred and sixty-four thousand, fifty-nine dollars and twenty-two five. That'll make that rural basic.
And that'll be good for a while, should have a couple hundred thousand or anything though.
Two fifty's a nice number.
Yeah.
Just works, works in my geometry.
If I look through roadside, I mean, there's only one way you can really cut that, pay, drop your seating expenses or drop your employees.
Yeah.
And, to tell you the truth, we've all kind of talked about it, that that grading project might have to come to an end, so that's gonna drop your seed down. If you're not seeding as much, do you need as many employees?
Well, even if he, even if he took and combined the grade crew and, you know, obviously it'd be less people, but combine this grade crew and this bridge crew and prioritizes, we have to do these bridges this year. If that's gonna take most of the year, but we can do a couple of grade projects, you know, at some point, and you can mix match. I mean.
I hear war of attrition, if you, you tell that grade crew they're gonna be going working on bridges or fashion highways, the part-time guys are gonna.
Right.
The day prices are gonna say.
Yeah.
I didn't sign up for that. And I, and I don't blame him, he's not gonna go slay hot, create soap lines around, somebody who has a hundred and five degrees.
Okay, I get it.
Nor does he deserve it to, but, uh, so yeah, it would. It might work with combining them.
But I think Paul's is writing on the walls, and he's already saying, we're gonna back off on things we can and address what we have to.
It was kinda, that's the point.
That's a big part of our budget, that secondary road to be. And, and we have had a good, Paul's had a good luxury for a long time of being able to, I'd kind of do what he wants. And it's benefited the county, so I sure as hell ain't complaining, mind you, but, but, uh, I think that, you know, considering what we have, we gotta look at budget wise. I think Kyle's kind of hitting it, and I, I think combining them two, you might actually even lose a cou- couple more guys, but you could probably get part timers above some other county. You know, somebody that's.
And I don't, and I don't know, but I don't see Jim Blair sticking around helping build bridges either.
Oh.
He's at that age where he's gonna be close to retiring.
Alright, yeah.
So I, you know, who knows how to play out.
But you know, I, I like Paul's idea of being able to home more of our own rock.
Yeah, he might be willing to, Jim might hop a truck, but he, he's not gonna work down a mud hole.
Yeah, and I get that.
Yeah.
I mean, he's paid his dues, you don't, I get that.
Yeah.
When you start in summer, it's cooler.
Where you started.
It'd never cool down either. Must've jumped in the water.
Well, I think she got that opportunity stuck in my head, huh?
Yeah.
I don't know, I think that that's probably where our biggest ability to cut budget and clean up budget, I should say, let's not call it, clean up the budget is probably secondary roads. You know, and because Paul's actually got us ahead on bridges, I mean, I'd still think we need to.
Paul already talked about taking fifty grand out for that new pickup.
Yeah.
So there's a fifty thousand less out of his budget.
And the guys did it in the shop, we didn't even have to pay an outside source, source to pretty it up.
You know, you add that into taking a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ten out of Chris's budget and you start to add up a little bit and move some of this over to rural basic.
Raise the levy and supplemental, right?
No, because we've done our max levy.
That'd be something to keep in line for next year, we'd probably have to bump it up a little.
The rural supplemental.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When says those wages only affect your budget, thirty thousand.
Do you feel more confident with that, Chuck?
Yeah, I think it's alright.
Chuck, if we still wanted to pay the jail off, even though there's only two years left?
I don't see much advantage to it, so.
Yeah, there's not a big advantage to it.
Interest ain't that much.
That's the one.
To, interest, cause we're on the back end of the note, interest ain't that big a deal.
No, I, that's why.
Leave it where it's at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hundred fifty thousand for the year.
I know it's one year, so.
Yeah.
Hey, I trust your numbers, you, you spawned a banker, so, and a good one.
You have a spawn? I know what you mean.
I throw out different words for different things.
No, I get it.
Gotta stay creative.
That's funny.
Don't wanna be boring, for goodness sake.
No.
Yep.
Paul, or Chuck, thank you for all that you do on this. I, I, I don't know if you get told that enough, I mean, we all thank you, that.
No, we're gonna do it all.
You know, your, your, your years of experience, throw it back to eighty-five. Are very beneficial.
The whole, all, everything we have in rural basic.
For the, is moving over to five million, we all wanna, one, two million, all of it, how it's just grown.
A million dollars, sixty million dollars, I guess.
And then.
I don't know what the right answer is there either.
We probably do the same here. We just have to let anyone, whoever that thought that, I think Kinkle down is Shelby, that, and then he said, you know, we gave him eighty-five.
And we only got a million in our general fund and others that, oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, it don't take but a year to dip into that.
I don't know how you.
And I get, I know you don't wanna be overtaxed and sitting on this huge fund now, but yeah, you gotta protect ourselves.
Well, you look what a year like this is.
And then it's got, no, it's okay, it's okay.
That could've been ugly.
We'll transfer those. That's like erosion.
I don't know, Chuck, my thought has always been if it's between twenty-five to thirty percent of your yearly budget. We got a little cushion, but. Some say six months.
How many years?
I've heard it, yeah.
Oh, you're at all. I think this, I don't know, we're not.
Kyle, that we probably need.
I don't think there's a counter, we're probably gouging terrible, so that's.
I mean, we already turned stuff in.
And I mean, we're very responsible with what we are spending, and that's probably why you do have.
Oh.
So he was.
That's why it really frustrating with what the state's doing with our property taxes, because if we
Awesome.
live within our assessment of growth, thanks, and to give those increases, but that way without having changed levies, we're staying status quo.
Yeah.
Which also is a lot harder for funds, you know.
You, when you, right, I don't know, we'll see what that does, I mean, that's why, I don't wanna get in a big hurry to change what we've got for fund balance now, because
Oh, yeah.
we don't know if these, if that passes, we don't know what the next two or three years is gonna look like. We might need all that time to slowly, I mean, I like how Paul has not hired back, so we basically.
He's been doing that a lot.
We've got rid of, uh, of salary costs without having to hurt anybody.
Level B or C.
And, and we might have to do some more of that, and.
Did you ever do wage increases for them? No, oh yeah, we did a free.
Right.
Okay.
We talked about maybe bringing them back in and telling them a dollar, because that gave the people on the bottom end.
Oh, that's just the admin, they talk to you about that, they talked down to that.
Well, we have.
They wanted us to bring it back to the full board and go five. We said, well, we're all at three.
Instead of doing big road projects, maybe we got some.
I mean, we wanted to do a dollar and do it in front of that whole bunch, so that the younger guys could see what we were proposing.
That's all they budget, that's all they bargained for is wages. They argued, they are, well, they didn't, they said, well, hey?
Doing the, those projects. Secondary road, I think they were just kinda.
Just the admin group.
This is just the admin.
Oh, yeah, not the admin, yeah, this is the admin, not the admin.
I didn't think the admin.
We're not to the union guys yet, we're up sheriff union.
Yeah.
And we told them three.
Right.
They weren't, I think that was why, that them two, two from the union were sitting here is to see if we really talked, make, nail these other people.
Right.
I think that's what that was, cause they didn't say anything. Don't you think?
Oh, yeah.
How pissed are they gonna be if we, if they don't do something, to say, we're gonna give you three like everybody else?
Well, they don't sign a contract, you're gonna have the.
You said that just loud enough, cause their, their heads picked up when you said that.
I didn't realize anyone was back there, but I don't really. Rarely care. Kyle, we're there, right?
So what happens if no contract is signed?
They don't have a contract, so you get to set the wages.
Said, what, we said that. We really worked hard to try to give back our blue, we really did.
No, I know, yeah.
I thought we did.
I agree with you.
Oh, we did.
You have.
And we can, we will continue to.
No, we will, regardless of popular opinion, right?
Regardless of how much money we have in our budget, as long as the state says you must do this, we'll continue to do that.
Cause they know best.
Over and over again.
Yeah, we're broke.
Then next year they'll say, well, you can't compare it to this, you gotta compare it to somebody that's got twenty years experience.
Will you get ahold of Erica and find out those acres?
No.
Please, if you think about it. And maybe, does Pheasants Forever need to meet and do this signature thing, or will Jake just stop up?
He already said, just call Jake when it needs it, he'll come up.
Okay.
So I don't.
I knew that.
You can call Jake. I call Erica. I imagine if we look at President of the County, Pheasants Forever, that's who K R said he would be the person to sign us, so I'm.
Who is it?
Jake Segobar.
Oh.